All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 Liberty Lake City Council Meeting. We are hybrid tonight. A good chunk of us are here in chambers and then a good chunk of us are over on the west side doing some work on behalf of the city. So the mayor, Mark McAvoy, our city administrator, Mike Kennedy and Annie Kurtz, our two city council members will be joining us via Zoom for tonight's meeting. Before we get to the call to order and the roll call and agenda, let's start with the invocation, which I will give followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to come together as a community tonight to discuss the important issues of the city, to do the business of the city and of our citizens. We ask for your blessing on this meeting. We ask for your blessing on our community that we can work together to solve the challenges that we face and do so in a respectful manner. And we ask for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, welcome, everyone. We will proceed to our roll call, which will be somewhat short tonight. Councilmember Van Orman and Councilmember Ball are not going to be joining us, so we'll ask for a motion to excuse them in just a moment. But we'll start with roll call. Councilmember Cargill is here. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Kennedy.
Can't hear you, Mike.
Present.
And the mayor is here as well.
Welcome.
All right. And again, we're waiting for Councilmember Kurtz. She was locked out of her room, it sounds like, or can't get into her room. So we will note the time that she joins us, but we will need a motion to excuse Councilmembers Ball and Van Orman.
Move to excuse Kurtz and Ball?
Second. Second.
Be Van Orman and Ball.
Sorry.
And Councilmember Spencer, seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, unanimous. Thank you very much. We're up to citizen comments now. As a reminder, if you are online, you can raise your hand and put a message in the chat and we will bring.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, excuse me. Pass over number five, agenda approval.
Yes, thank you. I apologize. Thank you very much. Kind of an important part. All right, so we are at number five now, the agenda approval. My apologies. I have one proposed change, the agenda, and that is removing item 11A from the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Point of order is 11C related to 11A?
That's a question for Mark. I don't.
Yes, we would couple those together.
11C would be together too? Okay, so then I guess 11C would also be removed from the agenda for this evening. Okay, okay, okay. So we're going to take a vote on removing 11A and then.
Discussion.
Yeah, we can remove 11C. So all those who.
Mayor Protem, you need to have a discussion first.
Those who wish to speak on this topic can do so.
I'll ask, is there a reason these are being removed from the agenda?
Yes, I had talked with Mark a little bit about this as well, and my concern is that, A, we don't have all the council members here this evening to consider this, and B, there are a lot of unanswered questions. Part of the reason for that is because we haven't yet got to the presentation on the library project management RFQ, which is 7B. And so I don't feel prepared to vote on this tonight, and that is why I'm suggesting that we remove it from the agenda for now.
Do you feel like any of your questions will be answered by item 7B?
I don't know. So that's why I'd like to remove it and then do it when whole council in place. Any other? Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree with that. My concern is it twofold. One, I think this is important enough that we have a full body of council individuals there, but also going through the, one thing is the presentation, but the other, I'm looking at 11A and the contract and stuff, and nothing's filled out. We have no dollar amounts. We have no cost whatsoever. That there would be charges here, and I know that there, that could be done down the road, but the challenge is that I certainly can't support authorizing to move ahead on something if the council does not know what the fees are, what's involved here.
I'll just comment. I believe that was the template that he may be referring to, the template, the work order template, but.
Mark, did you want to jump in here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. The, I believe Councilmember Spencer addressed the majority of my comment. The, the templates are included that in the contract that show what the work orders would look like downstream. This is a work order contract, and so think of it as a master services agreement whereby we engage a project manager. And through the course of the project, we issue work orders to that project manager that council approves on a case by case basis, or I should say a work order by work order basis that have costs, scope, schedule associated with them.
Any other thoughts? Yes, Councilmember Kennedy.
That is correct, Mark. We've done that in the past, but also I feel that the process leading up to this that, you know, the council was advised that we're going to be looking at a committee on this, but it never came back to the council to see who's going to be involved, who's going to be on this committee, and see how we're going to move forward. In the past, when we've dealt with the same company, I think did a pretty good job with us, that there was a venting, and what it was, is it came to the council, we actually had three of the council members, if I remember correctly, who were on that committee that looked at this, because I think what we want to do, I see the mayor holding up two fingers, so that's more than one. So I think what's important to do is that the people who we have doing the interview, what is their background? Do they have some expertise when it comes to awarding contracts and doing this type of work? I know it's been brought up in the past that it doesn't seem like this council is qualified to make these type of decisions, and yet we can appoint committees who seem to have all the qualifications there are. So I'm really concerned about that, was it done properly? In the sense that we gave enough information to get possibly other bids, I think we should look at how that was put out there. I understand, and I think there was more than one, there might have been five that were sent out to, but we only had the one who came back on it. Also, in listening to the, the report from the library trustees, a comment was made that from the individuals that this is, a comment was made that the budget for this is not sufficient. That if that's the case, before we even start, we're already upside down in what we think is going to be spent there. One of the individuals used a figure of over $8 million. You know, we gave a vote to the citizens to try to build a building that would have possibly, or have the library in it, possibly move City Hall and stuff in it, and a pool. And that was over $9 million. And now I understand the figure is being thrown out, could be as high as $8 million. So I'm apprehensive of moving forward. I don't see this as a emergency that we do this right now. I do feel it needs to be discussed more at the council level when we have a full full staff here. Thank you.
Mayor, did you want to comment here?
Yeah, just a couple of points of clarification. A, I understand that there are questions and and so, you know, I'm, I'm personally fine, you know, fine. Going ahead with the presentation tonight, moving the, the agenda item to maybe the next meeting or whatever, but I would like to clarify a couple of points. On the Trailhead Project, there was one, actually one council member on, on the committee, and it was Councilmember Follier. I myself sat on it as well, but I was, I forgot, I was not a council member at the time. And in this case, we did have one council member as well, and that'll be addressed in the presentation. I'm not going to go deep dive into that. And it's also not the same company. It's the same project manager. It's not the same company. And I'm not sure where the $8 million comes from, but that's why we need to make sure that, that, you know, we're going off the information that is presented in the meetings and in the packets, not from hearsay. I'm not sure where that number came from, but that number was not, is not what came up in, in the discussions. I just want to clarify those couple of things, but I, I understand the reasons for wanting to move it forward. Looking forward to the presentation.
And I do think it would be helpful, and maybe the special presentation tonight will cover it. But I was also thinking before the special presentation was put on the agenda that it would be helpful to do a work, a workshop on it as well, just so everyone is up to speed on what the latest is, and I, I watched the meeting from last week as well and had a bunch of questions. As Mark knows, Mark and I talked on Friday about this, so. So that is why I was proposing moving it. Are there any other council comments before we vote? So, Mark, just to clarify, or excuse me, Sean, just to clarify this, we have four council members, and so we need, if we were going to remove it, we'd need three. Is that correct? Okay, so all those in favor of removing.
I think we have five.
Oh, Annie's on? Okay, good. Some reason she's not popping up on my screen. I'm not sure why. Okay, so Annie is on. And we will go ahead and proceed with the vote. All those in favor of moving or removing item 11A from the agenda, please say aye. Annie, can you hear us? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and all those opposed? Okay, Councilmember Dunn, did you vote in favor?
I voted aye.
Okay, so final vote was four to one. Now we will need to proceed to remove 11C, so I'll make a motion to remove item 11C from the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Four, one, excuse me. Four, one, four, one again. All right. Thank you. Also, A and C are removed, but we will still be discussing the item in seven, or the issue in 7B as well. All right, now that we've taken those off the agenda, are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, I will make a motion then to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that says unanimously. Thank you. All right, now we are up to citizen comments. Again, I apologize that I jumped the shark there. If you are online, please just raise your hand or put a comment in the chat, and we will take your comments. If you are in chambers and would like to speak, please fill out one of the yellow forms. And you get three minutes. Please keep your comments respectful, and we will get to all the comments as they come up. The first one we have is from a friend, Tom Salberg.
First staff electeds.
Neighbor, staff, electeds, and guests, Tom Salberg from the River District. Did you know that we have another survey? Of course you do, because it was announced at a previous meeting. Do you know where to find it? No? So far in the three weeks it's been out, only eight of us have found it. It can be found on the city website. After you create a login, which is a second login to your profile. To create this new login takes 643 characters to explain. Once you do this, you are asked, what are your funding priorities for Liberty Lake 2025? Write your suggestions and views here to city leaders about current or proposed services in the city's 2025 budget. This is a survey. You are given 500 characters to reply to a question and/or to ask your questions. It is said that a survey is only as good as its design, so it is important to be thorough at every stage from your initial idea to final data analysis. By taking the time to plan out your research question and distribution model, you'll be in the best position to get quality data. The first survey, which you've heard about, was nine pages long with very few actual responses and which results still have not been made public. This current survey has not been advertised on any platform, including the city Facebook page. The survey was not designed or even discussed by the Community Engagement Commission, whose express mission is to, and I quote, serve in an advisory capacity to the mayor and city council to act as a citizen engagement and advisory body to provide guidance, direction, and input to the mayor and city council, which will include but is not limited to study and submit recommendations to the mayor and city council regarding best methods to actively and sustainably engage residents in co-production, engaging citizens in the planning and implementation process for upcoming projects, capital improvements, community initiatives, and other matters as directed by their mayor and city council. If you search the city page, which some people do, if you're going to look for a survey, you will not be able to find this. You will find August 8th of 2023 is the most recent post having to do with surveys. The Community Engagement Commission should be included in the discussion and development of surveys so that they, one, represent the community, and, two, they are properly designed, informative, useful, and actually available to the citizens, mayor, staff, and city council. To be continued. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. Are there any other comments here in chambers? All right, is there anyone online who would like to make a comment? Nobody? Okay, all right, we will have the opportunity for citizen comments again later on in the agenda. We will now move on to announcements, proclamations, special presentations, and the city academy recognition. Mark, do you want to take this? We got, or Mayor?
Yeah, I'll be happy to, Mayor Protem. I think that we have three folks from the academy who are going to be there to receive their certificate of completion. And Mayor Protem and everybody else, I regret that I'm not able to be there in the chamber to be able to recognize these folks. We had a third class, as you know, go through the academy. It's an eight-week program. This go-around was a little bit different in that instead of inviting all of our partners to a fixed location to provide information to a group of academy attendees, we took the academy attendees to our partners' locations and showed them and told them what was happening, for example, at the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District, at Fire Station Number Three at the Police Department. And so giving them the opportunity not only to see our partners in their own environments, but also seeing the tools that they use and some of the techniques that they use to do the work that they do and providing the services that they do to the residents of Liberty Lake. And so with that, I think it was a much more meaningful experience, and we hope to replicate that going forward. And so without any further comment, I will ask Summer Darrow, Pixel Stevens, and Grace Strickland to come up and receive their certificates of completion and hopefully get a group photo that David is going to take. And while they are getting in position to do that, I'll just mention that the folks that completed the academy that aren't present, and we will mail their certificates to them, are Chris Falsted, Grim, Jim Grasafi, and Mark and Stephanie Sullivan. And so like I said, we had a little bit of a smaller audience this time, but this class was also the first time that our open invitation was met with folks coming out to some of the sessions. So we had two individuals. One of them was Councilmember Ball. Another one was another resident that came out and joined us at one of the academy sessions, having not registered. So I think on all fronts, this one was our most successful academy, and we hope to get more registrants for next spring's session number four. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor Protem.
Mark, we were being efficient, and we took the photo while you were talking, so.
That's what I hoped was happening.
Thank you, and congratulations to Summer, Pixel, and Grace. All right, we will now move into item 7B, the Library Project Management RFQ and selection process. Mark, is this you?
It is, although I'm going to be joined by several folks who are also in chamber, and so I'm going to give some verbal cues, and then hopefully we'll have folks join us at the podium. And I, I am not able to see the presentation, so I'm going to do my best to kind of navigate through. And Kyle, if you can take us to slide number two.
Standby, Mark. They're bringing it up here.
Okay.
Can you see that, Mark?
I can. Great. Perfect. Okay, so what we want to do tonight is, is give you a little bit of backstory of the process that was used in the development of the RFQ and putting together the selection process for the project management contract that was previously on the agenda that's now been moved, and give you the opportunity to ask questions. And so I'll start out, Kyle, if we can go to the next slide. Just kind of looking back on a recent history. And this is just to give everybody a level set, right? So we have a couple of items that lead up to tonight. We have also approving the purchase of the 23129 East Mission, which is currently Legacy Church for the new library that occurred in July of 2022. Moving forward to approving funding for that purchase of that facility in August of 2022. And then we had a couple of things approving budgets that included project contemplated cost, design and construction. And you'll see those in the amendment to 280, ordinance 284A in September of 2022. And then we had a lease with Legacy Church that allowed them to remain until ultimately August of 2025, or I'm sorry, April of 2025. So their lease expires April 30th of 2025, and so that's kind of the timeline that we're working with to have a project start turning dirt, for lack of a better term. We're not building from the ground up, but starting work is there about sometime after April 30th, 2025. And then what we had in December of 2023, which was just six months or so ago, was council adopting both the 2024 through 2029 capital facilities plan and the 2024 annual budget. Both of those included expenses for the library project and expenses for a master facilities plan. Both of those are contemplated as projects and budgeted in those two documents. And then based on that, based on the adoption of those budgets, the capital and operating budget, staff began to develop the library design and construction project in the early part of 2024, and we officially kind of kicked off in February of 2024. And so tonight, we brought to you the, the contract. And so what happened between points seven and eight, where staff, based on the adoption of the CFP and the budget, and the presentation of the contract for consideration, a lot of stuff happened. And so I want to take a little bit deeper dive and show you some specifics. And Kyle, if you can go to the next slide. So what does project development look like in, in this case, or in other words, what happened between point seven and eight? And so you can see the timeline there, starting in February. We, we began developing the RFQ and worked with a group of internal staff members that had gone through this process before. We worked with mostly executive level staff, city attorney, and some others to develop the RFQ. And then based upon the required process and RCW, we published the RFQ in the local paper, which in our case is the Spokane Valley News Herald, and we did that on March 22nd and again on March 29th. So two consecutive issues. And then in addition to that, we also uploaded it to the Abaddon Plan Center, which is essentially an electronic clearinghouse for people to come in and find projects that they would like to either ask questions about or potentially put bids in for, or present, present proposals for. And so in those three ways, the publication in Spokane Valley News and the upload to Abaddon Plan Center, those were the mechanisms that we used to make the industry know that this project was out there. And so we had a deadline for statements of qualification to be submitted to the city for those interested in the project, becoming project manager for this project in April of 2024, April 21st, to be exact. And then we had a deadline for SOQ evaluation of April the 26th. And so sometime between when the RFQ was developed and when the deadline for SOQ evaluation was, Jandy Humble, who's our library director, who is the project lead for this project, as the library director, put together an evaluation committee, and that is a typical thing that happens for any project that we are going to receive bids for. We typically put together an evaluation committee that looks at either the proposal, in this case, the statement of qualifications, a bid potentially, and evaluates it based on the merits according to the specifications laid out in the request for qualifications in this case. And so that deadline for those was April 26th. And then based on the scoring or the evaluation of those SOQs, we determined that we wanted to invite finalists back for an interview which occurred on May 10th. And then on May 30th, as you see there, we began contract development, which was getting the city attorney involved and, in effect, negotiating with the selected vendor. And so with that, I'm going to pause, and I'm going to invite Jonathan Miller up to the podium from Turner and Townsend Hury, who is the selected vendor. And I'm going to ask him to go over a little bit about information about the firm, why they chose to submit their SOQ, and a little bit about their approach to this project. And so with that, I will turn it over to Jonathan, and as, as he's preparing, you'll recognize Jonathan who.
Mark?
Yes.
Just, just so you know, there is no Jonathan in the room.
So he may be.
Oh, he's online. Okay.
He's, he's joining us virtually. Sorry about that, Jonathan. I thought you were there. So, so you'll recognize Jonathan's name, and when he, his box shows up, his face, he was the project manager for the Trailhead Project. And so he has some familiarity with the, the city, our projects, and this whole process, and I'll let him explain more about that as he takes over. So Jonathan, take it away.
All right, thank you, Mark. Am I able to share my screen? It says, I cannot share while the other participant is sharing.
So Jonathan, we have yours queued up as.
Okay.
Embedded in ours, so you should just be able to go through slide by slide.
Okay. Will I be able to see it on my screen?
We'll pull that back up.
Okay. Well, as we pull that up, yeah, thank you, Mark, and thank you, city council and mayor for having me here tonight. As Mark mentioned, I'm Jonathan Miller. I'm a senior project manager with Turner and Townsend Hury. Like Mark said, you may recognize me. I did, I did have the pleasure of working on the Trailhead Reconstruction Project. It was great working with the city of Liberty Lake. I'm extremely excited to have the opportunity to work with the city of Liberty Lake again, hopefully. Part of, we, we've had this project on our radar for a long time here. Are we having luck getting the presentation pulled up by chance?
There it is, right there.
Perfect. Could we go to the next slide, please? Yes, thank you. Thank you. There we go. Okay, so diving in here. So we've had this project on our radar for a long time. We've been checking the advertisements. We've been checking the Abaddon Plan Center. When we finally saw it come out, we were extremely excited to put, put together our, our statement of qualifications and submit. So the perfect, the purpose of tonight is really to just give a little overview about Turner and Townsend Hury and our approach to managing this project. Next slide, please. So we have eight people here in our Spokane office. Our Spokane office started in 2006. We've had an office in the state of Washington since 1974. We have offices scattered across the country, but we have three offices in the Northwest, Seattle and Portland being the other two locations. We've served over 160 public agencies. two locations. We've served over 160 uh, public agencies in the Pacific Northwest. Uh, 50 years service seen public sectors, 70 years in existence overall. Next slide, please. Uh, and a little bit about our proposed project team for this project. So David Bodine, project executive. Uh, he recently came off his second term uh, on the project review committee, which is the PRC for short, which is the uh, state board that approves alternative delivery. Uh, so for Trailhead project, we had to go get approval to utilize progressive design build um, to the project review committee. Uh, between David and myself, we have over 40 years of owner's representative experience. Uh, we've managed over one and a half billion dollars worth of uh, public projects in the state of Washington. Uh, and rounding out our team, John Minder, an up and coming star in our company, uh, holds his uh, engineering degree from Gonzaga. And we have a full depth of other support as needed from financial controls to scheduling to cost estimating. Next slide, please. Uh, so a little bit about how our team is equipped to manage this project. Um, so I actually did the initial building condition assessment report a couple of years ago. So we have familiarity with the building, which just helps with that honeymoon phase. Um, where it allows us to be more cost effective and just uh, add more value by, by having that, that history of the project. Um, like I mentioned, David and I have done a lot of Washington State procurement utilizing all types of delivery. Um, so we, we envision a delivery method charrette as being one of the first steps of this project where we choose the appropriate delivery method for this library project. Uh, the project budget is going to be a huge part of that. Um, I mentioned the progressive design build like we did on the Trailhead project. Uh, in the state of Washington, you have to have a minimum $2 million project total, total project cost. Uh, but that really shouldn't be the, the threshold of whether you do it or not. It's about what's going to add the most value. Um, so we really need to take a look at the budget, uh, and what's going to be the best delivery method for this specific project. And I threw a couple of dates on here for the PRC submission date. So if we do elect to go with progressive design build, we would need to submit uh, the application either August 20th, or if we miss that date, the next opportunity would be October 21st to submit an application. And then it would take about another five weeks to actually get approval from the state to utilize uh, that alternative delivery method. So once we have uh, our delivery method determined, then it's about the team procurement. So if it's progressive design build, who's going to be our best design build partner to tackle this particular project and the scope? Uh, if we do design bid build, it's going to be the same thing, but a little different without a contractor. Who's the best architect and engineers to fit the scope that we need? Uh, from there, it's executing the project. And one of the big things here is just going to be tying in the material lead times with the overall schedule. Um, this is probably going to be a pretty quick construction schedule, given uh, the potential scope. And so we just want to make sure that we have lead times for things like uh, mechanical and electrical equipment. So it's arriving on site when we need it. So we're not sitting around waiting two months while uh, the rooftop units show up. Um, so we just have to be careful that we're ordering those materials. Um, and it ties in nicely with our construction schedule. Uh, and lastly, you know, we need to close out the, the process early. A lot of people think that starting the closeout of a construction job starts towards the end, but that leads to sloppy turnover. So we just will ensure that that closeout process starts early. So we have a smooth transition to close out the project. Next slide, please. Uh, and a little bit about our approach to managing the project. So uh, Turner and Townsend Hury, we have 15 principles of project management. Uh, you probably can't read any of those 15 over on the right hand side, but really for this specific project, we really boiled it down. Um, uh, to, to balancing the scope, budget, schedule and the project goals. We'll probably have an aggressive, aggressive budget, um, aggressive scope, and it's about balancing those while trying to meet all the project goals. Uh, management plan and developing the, the lines of communication, that's going to be critically important. Not only internal communication, but external communication as well. What are those communication plans? Um, and then upfront here, weekly check-in meetings are just going to be critically important um, to make sure we're holding ourselves accountable, uh, delivering on our action items and updating on any breaking news that may be relevant to the project. Um, and just the little wheel down at the bottom that says proactive, collaborate, communicate. Those are really, I mean, the, the three tenants of project management. If you do those three things, you're doing 90% of your job well. Anybody can be reactive. The good project managers are proactive and trying to prevent problems from happening before they begin. Next slide, please. Uh, so managing changes, how we'll manage change it to the market and environment. Um, so obviously it's going to start upfront with managing to that established budget. We need to have a good validation period where we have a, a realistic scope to our, to our budget. Um, lead times, like I mentioned uh, earlier, is going to be critically important. That's going to have to tie into our overall schedule. So we just have a smooth project from start to finish. Contingency is a great way to manage um, any market condition changes. Um, not only through design, but also through construction and then also having a plan through construction to potentially buy back scope as risk reduces. So as risk reduces and we feel more comfortable, more comfortable, what are some value adds we can put back into the project that still fits with our schedule? Um, and uh, another thing that could be a unique opportunity for this project is if we do progressive design build, the potential to bring on trade partners early to help us design to budget, uh, help us order materials early. Uh, if we don't go progressive design build, uh, it's going to be important to know when we're going out to market to get bids. We don't want to limit ourselves to only getting one bid uh, by going out to the market at the wrong time. Uh, and then last, of course, progressive design build is, is one of the biggest advantages is it shifts the risk to the design builder and away from the owner. Um, so that's one of the huge ways uh, to really shift that risk of market changes to, to a design builder rather than the owner taking that risk. Next slide, please. And I think, and that sums up our company, uh, briefly and some of our project approaching. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Any, excuse me, any questions from council for Jonathan?
Um, uh, Jonathan, thanks for the content, your presentation. It's uh, very clear that you've got a lot of experience. Uh, specifically, I appreciate your experience with City Liberty Lake for prior execution on the Trailhead. So um, seems like you're in a pretty good position to potentially take on our project. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Jonathan, just a, a quick question uh, for you. I, I um, I was on a um, watching some of the video of the, at the library board last week. Uh, I didn't see your previous presentations, obviously, because I was not on the, the committee. But it sounded like the, the comments were that this was going to be uh, a lot more expensive than we originally thought it might be. Um, do you have any um, flavor or commentary that you can add to that, given the kind of what we've laid out and what you think the, the ballpark cost could be?
Sure. I, I mean, it's going to vary widely based on what the, the scope and direction is. So I'll go back to that, the building condition report that was done two years ago. Some of just the basic code stuff that we have to do from mechanical, electrical to fire suppression upgrades. That's going to be pushing, you know, almost $2 million, just that alone. Um, so I, I think there was previously a $2 million thrown out, uh, which really is just, those are the bare minimum to, to meet your energy code now that we've escalated two years out from it. Um, and then from there, it's really what architectural features are you going to put into it? You know, your, your existing library, it has some nice architectural flavor to it, in my view. And I, I would imagine you would want to take some of that flavor and put it into the new space. Um, so it really depends what level do you go to? You know, you're going to have to add offices, um, kiosk check, uh, checkout spaces. Um, or is there opportunity to, to do something that rivals some of the Spokane libraries? And I, and I, maybe I shouldn't have said that. Uh, I, I'm speaking as a, as a father of a toddler who loves the playground areas at uh, the Spokane libraries. You know, ma- maybe that's a potential. Um, and if we do progressive design build, we could get realistic cost numbers and present those and get direction on, on if that's something city council wants to do. So I can't really say what the cost is going to be without knowing what the scope, but just the bare minimum uh, code improvements, you know, you're pushing $2 million. And then from there, everything you do after that's just going to be uh, what architectural flavor are you going to do?
Okay. Um, Mark, do you have more that you want to present before we get to other questions?
We do.
Okay.
And so with that, Kyle, if you can go to the next slide.
Am I up, Mark, or is it more from you?
Yes, note, and, and with that, I'm going to invite Jandy up to the podium and she is going to present the information on the next slide. So Kyle, you can go to the next slide.
So council tonight, I have the information on the evaluation committee. Um, like Mark said, I'm the project lead on this project. And so I wrote the RFQ that went out and was posted to Abaddon and Spokane Valley Herald. And then after that was posted, I created a evaluation committee. Um, the members of the evaluation committee were, sorry, I'm looking at my slide behind me. Um, we had Mark as the city administrator, um, myself as the library director. Um, Lisa Key from the city as well, because of all her building experience. Um, we had Annie Kurtz as the representative from the city council. Um, Kim Gerard was our representative from the Board of Trustees. We had, um, let's see, we had a library patron um, who served on the committee. We had Natalie Van, Van Buren, um, who represented the patron. And then finally we had Mayor Chris, who was a member of the evaluation committee. Because this is a city project and more specifically a library project, I wanted our evaluation committee to include all of our community stakeholders. So obviously the friends are a part of the library. Our patronage is very important to us. So we wanted to get multiple voices and multiple points of view as we were evaluating um, our project manager. So, um, can we go back to that side, slide for me? Thank you. So um, we assembled our steering committee, we posted um, the RFQ. Once the time was up, we sent out all of the proposals to our evaluation committee. We just had Townsend's proposal. So um, I provided each of our steering committee members with the Townsend proposal. Um, it also had a copy of the RFQ. It also had a copy of the library grant application that we just turned into the state to give our steering committee kind of some insights into the vision and what uh, my hopes are for this project. And all, I also included our community assessment that we completed in 2019 um, that had a lot of information on what our patrons were envisioning for um, our library. So they kind of had a full picture and had a little bit more insight. Um, so our evaluation committee had over a week to review the proposal. Um, they scored the proposal on the following qualifications, the projects teams experience and qualifications, the consultants experience with similar projects, project management approach, organization and clarity of the SOQ. So they gave us a score out of 100. Um, as you can see, most of the scores were in the 90s. So it was um, scored quite well. And so we invited Townsend back for a interview. Um, we had an in-person interview at the library. Um, Townsend gave us a presentation and then the interview committee was able to ask all sorts of questions. Um, following that interview, um, we sent all of our committee members home and they did a, they gave a score on the interview. Um, once we got those scores back, um, we asked them one final question, which was um, based on the firm's total score, do you recommend we move forward to negotiate a contract with Turner, Townsend and Hury? Um, so based on the scores, we thought they were doing really well. And so we asked them the final question of, would you feel comfortable moving forward with this project? And um, it was a unanimous response of yes. Um, do you guys have any questions for me on the steering committee's process?
I have a quick question, Jandy.
Yeah.
So can you confirm then that we only received one proposal?
Yes.
And it sounded like, um, again, from the meeting that I watched last week, that part of the reason for that was because of concerns from the others that it was, it, it didn't, they didn't have enough money to, to do within the budget, what we were trying to do. Is that?
No, we didn't, um, we didn't hear feedback from other firms who didn't submit proposals.
Okay.
So we just had the one proposal. So that's, we went through the process of reviewing that proposal.
Mark, do you have, can you have it, add anything to that?
Sure. Um, and I'm not comfortable uh, sharing the name of the firm that I spoke with, but I reached out to a firm that was on the list that we received from Abaddon after we completed the assessment. And after we entered into contract negotiation with uh, Turner and Townsend Hury to just ask a question. Uh, you showed interest, you reached out through Abaddon. Um, is there a reason that you can share with me why you didn't submit statements of qualification? The answer I got from that one firm was uh, the budget that was published. Um, the budget that is available um, as published in the capital facilities plan is, is not the kind of project that we typically pursue. And so that was the answer from one of the 15 firms that had expressed some kind of interest through their engagement with Abaddon.
Any other questions for Jandy or Mark?
Uh, Jandy, I just reflect to you, it looks like you've assembled a really good cross-section of stakeholders from within our community. Uh, I especially appreciate the notion of a patron and reflecting uh, what the people who use our library are interested in it being. So, thanks.
Yes, since we have, you know, daily, weekly, monthly users, we wanted their input since they're going to be the ones that are using the library the most. Yes.
And uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. I think um, as one of the council members or the council member that um, participated in the process. Um, can everybody hear me? Okay. I didn't check. Okay. Um, I think one of the things that led to my scoring of, of this group um, were the impeccable credentials that they had. Um, the previous experience that in particular Jonathan had working with us on Trailhead. Um, and the satisfaction that the city and the residents have had with that project and the outcomes that we had there. Um, I thought that they had excellent results in that, that whole process. Um, and they had the ability to adapt to the changing market conditions and work with us in presenting different um, touchpoints for us to look at it and sort of evaluate um, what our wants versus our needs and how much those things actually cost us. Um, I appreciated Jonathan's familiarity with the building, having done that review of the building uh, previously. And I think at the end of the day, they responded to a competitive process and it, it means unfortunate that the other, it sounds like 15 members. I didn't know that until just now. Um, different people, different groups um, didn't respond. Um, but I think we did have a good cross-section of citizens, city staff, a council member, the mayor. Um, there to ask a lot of questions. And we did ask a lot of questions about um, when uh, I don't know if it was Jonathan or it was just his team that talked about, you know, for about $2 million, but you're basically going to get HVAC and up to code. Um, so there was some discussion about, you know, um, is the budget that we have something that is uh, realistic for the expectations that are out there? And I think that that's the part that is going to come in time, um, like we did with Trailhead. Um, if we want, what we want, we're going to have to figure out what the cost is. And I think that's part of the design build process. Um, but I think that um, one of the things I'm interested in is uh, Mayor Protem and then um, Councilmember Kennedy, you guys both talked about having lots of questions. And I want to make sure that you guys ask those questions tonight so that when we come back, hopefully, you know, at the next council meeting, uh, those questions are answered so that you guys can make a decision um, based on the information that you're looking for. So I'm hoping that there are some concrete and specific questions that you guys have. Um, if there's asks for additional information that you guys, that you guys do that tonight um, so that we can come back and figure out how to move forward. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Jandy?
Shit, looks like he has.
Oh, Councilmember. Oh, Councilmember.
Um, yeah, thank you. So it, it sounds like the budget that was published in the RFQ was about that $2 million roughly there.
So um, in the RFQ, we put it as part of the application to give us what they thought a budget would be. Um, I think somewhere in Abaddon, you have to kind of put what a rough estimate was. So I took the OAC report that we had from Jonathan from two years ago and then multiplied it for a couple of years of inflation and that got us the 2.1 million. So that's just the OAC report.
Okay.
So.
I, I guess my main uh, concern here is that um, perhaps be, because it sounds like out the gate, we're looking at something more than 2 million if we want to actually do something to the bill, building other than get it up to code. Uh, so I guess my concern about moving forward with selecting uh, this project manager without putting out a realistic budget, because if there were others that were interested um, knowing what the realistic budget may be, because it, you know, if it's going to be more than 2.1, um, my concern is we didn't get all the people who might be interested in the real, in the real cost that's going to be involved here.
Any other thoughts or question, uh, Mayor?
Yeah, just, uh, I was just wondering if um, Jonathan, I know during the interview process, you had spoken to the, the increases in costs, you know, and I know Jandy did a good job putting, applying the interest. Um, uh, sorry, the inflation rate. Um, but I know you spoke of some specific things during the interview process about, you know, with regards to costs and one's gone up so much in percentages. And we also talked about what the projections are going forward. Can you touch on that a bit?
Yeah, so the while, believe it or not, in, inflation and cost escalation is stabilizing. Um, it's still obviously going up. Once materials go up, they're, they're not coming back down. Uh, labor will go up every year, especially for public projects in Washington State with prevailing wage. Um, we're looking, depending what scopes and when we were looking at mechanical, electric- We're looking, depending what scopes and when we were looking at mechanical, electrical. Fire suppression, we're really in that six to eight percent cost escalation, which is really not that too far off historical data. When we were in Trailhead, we were in that hyper escalation where every time we blinked our eyes, it was going up 10%. So things have really stabilized. So I think using that six to eight percent per year is pretty realistic. Based on going back to that, uh, those 2022 numbers.
Councilmember Kennedy. I think Councilmember Kennedy froze. Mike, can you hear us? Looks like you're still on mute, Mike.
Bottom left hand of your screen there. Councilmember Kennedy.
Just came up.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, thanks for the presentation. Very, very good information. My concern is not the company who's applying, of course, not Jonathan, I think they did a very good job for us. My concern as a citizen, but also a council member having a vote on something like this. Is it going forward with what I consider sometimes a blank check with some of the things that happen in government? I'm not comfortable with that from a standpoint of a citizen and also a council member. That happened with Trailhead, it's happened with many things. That we start something and then, oh, by the way, we could do this, but it costs more money. Okay, let's go ahead and do that. It's sort of like, you know, when we start us, well, if we could do this, if we could just get some more money. So I know on Trailhead, it came up where we had a budget. That this is what we're going to work with. And a lot of things were changed interior. The result is still great. Trailhead looks fantastic. We're moving ahead with that. I think it's a great asset for the city. But the concern is, is that we need to know what pretty much is going to cost us. Like, uh, if we paid $2.1 million or thereabouts for the building. If we're looking at $2 million, it could be more, it could be less. I appreciate the number, at least we have a number to work with. But if we hit, if we don't know what we're going to want inside. To get some idea what it's going to cost. That's what I'm concerned about. My concern is not the company or Jonathan, or say the selection, because we only had one. Is that how we move forward? And we don't get in a position where suddenly what happens is that people come back to the council and says, oh, but we've already committed, we can't back out. That's what concerns me about government. That's what concerns me about the possibility of this project. I'm more comfortable that we spend some time to say, okay, if we're roughly $2 million for bringing the building up to code. What are we looking at in the interior? That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Jonathan, I'm going to go, go back to you maybe, and unfortunately, our newest council member. Councilmember Ball is not with us, but I'll make sure she, uh, she goes back and listens to the meeting. But could you maybe give a, a quick refresher on the GMP process then? And give some, maybe even some examples from Trailhead. Just refresher for the public as well.
Sure, and I, I understand and appreciate those comments. So just going back to, uh, Trailhead, so one of the, what we did on Trailhead. Once we got a progressive design build team on board, if you recall, we actually brought three different options to city council. It was the, the low, the low, medium and higher option. To actually give direction. So once city council voted to say which way they wanted to go, what, what was included in the scope? What was the overall budget? That's when we move forward with design. So I could see a similar process with this. Uh, for the library, because right now we just don't know. And if you really want the best information you can get, progressive design build is going to be the way to get that information. But I would then go back to, uh, my previous comment from the presentation. If we're in that 2.1 million dollar range. We probably would not get approval from the state of Washington to do progressive design build. We barely scratched the surface of what the RCW requires. Um, and, and we would be so limited in scope, they just would say. You, you don't need the innovation from a design builder if, if you're limited to those three or four scopes. So that's really how I see this process going forward and just. To, for context, for our contract, we're just time and expense, so however many hours we put in is, is what's charged, so. It, just to be clear, it's not a blank check for us and it's really formulating, what does the scope look like? Now we can start getting better budget numbers moving forward, so rather than just saying $2 million, well, if we add these scope. Maybe are we up to $3 million? Are we up to 3.4? And once we start to get up to that, that's when we could go get progressive design build approval. Uh, and really dial in what those costs are going to be.
And if, if I can say it in a different way to answer both Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Spencer's questions. And in order to build out a scope that translates into a projected budget, we're going to have to have a third party. With special expertise in that. To be able to do that. And so that is part of the process and, and, and without that, we're going to be left with. Building that scope in, in, in-house. And we don't have the expertise on staff to be able to do that. Hence, the, um, development of a contract. To go and hire experts that can carry us through the process to not only define the scope. And to, uh, translate it into a budget, but then to manage the process. And project from whatever council deems as the scope with the associated budget. Through design and construction.
I have a, a few more questions, Mark. But I know Councilmember Kennedy has a comment. Uh, it looks like we can't hear you, Mike.
I think your mic is flipped up.
Yeah, it's up on your head. And now you're muted. There you go.
There we go.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, under no circumstance, I feel we're giving a blank check to Jonathan, this company, I don't see that at all. The blank check to me comes down that when we seem to get into projects, government gets into projects. Decisions start being made on emotion and not logic. Emotion is if we get into a building and say, well, you know, gee whiz, we could put in a fireplace, which I think is great. And what it's going to cost us another $300,000. Oh, let's do that after the fact. That's where I'm concerned. That's why I'm concerned. I, I, I've been a great, huge supporter of the library long before we had other individuals who were. I've tried to do everything I can to find funding to figure out how we can take the existing library, expand that. Into the parking lot of, uh, north where we would be able to do it. It was great the city moved forward and bought this building. It's great that we're in this process. The, but the process has to be is we don't. We don't let emotion run us over. After we select a company and start looking at a budget, whereas, well, we got the money, let's go ahead and do it. We're so far into it. Let's go ahead and do that also. Let's do that also. No, let's tell the citizens upfront what we think it's going to cost. If it's going to be a two, another $2 million, just grabbing a figure, then we're looking at 6 million. Then tell them it's 6 million. Or seven. If we come in less, we're heroes. We come in more, we look like fools. Thank you.
Mark, do you have other parts of this presentation you want to continue on before?
I have, I have two, yeah, I have two slides. And really, this is just summary, the, in, in this case. The, the project team is local, you've heard from Jonathan, you know, you know his credentials. The third piece of this that I want to make counsel aware of is. That it allows for there to be alignment and economy of scale with our facilities master plan. This is not something that we went into this project development. Necessarily considering, but as a result of the process. It, there is an opportunity to wrap the facilities master plan into the contract with Turner and Townsend Herry. To experience some economy of scale there and also sync the project so that. As we're making decisions about the library, the new library. We can also make decisions about the space that the existing library leaves when it goes to the new building. And what every other facility is going to need. To look like and act like as we continue to grow and mature as an organization through our build out. And so we get an alignment and an economy of scale there as well. And so with that, Kyle, if you can go to the next slide. Obviously, this will be, uh, for the future now, but our recommendation is that we approve the project management services agreement. And ultimately approve work order number one under the agreement. And that concludes the presentation, uh, Mayor Protem, if you want to jump into questions at this point.
Thanks, Mark. Does anyone have any questions? Before I ask a few? Okay. Mark, a, a couple of questions. Thank you for, um. Mentioning the facilities master plan. I kind of have the same, um, opinion as, as Councilmember Spencer. I, I guess my concern is that if we. If we went out and we said, we think the. Scope is going to be 2 point whatever. But we're now being told that there's really no way unless we just. Unless we just update it for energy, uh, that it's going to be 2.1 or 2.2 or whatever. Does that open up the possibility that we could have received more bids? Uh, or more proposals, I should say. And I, I guess that's where I'm kind of. The hiccup that I'm having with this is that one, we only have one proposal. It may be a very well, it may be a great proposal, it may be the one we end up going with, but we only have one. The second part is that. Because this is doing other things with the potential of the facilities, uh, master plan, as you mentioned. I have, I have a real problem, A, with there only being one to choose from and B. There not being more folks from, I guess, other parts of the city or other, the, the city council or whatever, that were on the original. Committee to, to choose. I mean, for, the way that you're making the sound, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is that. This is going to do a lot more or has the potential to do a lot more than just the library. Is that? Correct?
So to clarify, um, the. Evaluation committee, um, did not evaluate. The proposal or the, the statement of qualifications that, that Turner and Townsend Herry submitted. For anything other than being the project manager, manager for the library design and construction project. It was through the discussion, um, where we realized that there could be some economy of scale and so. Whether it is Turner and Townsend Herry or some other firm that is the project manager. The actual work that is going to be done, in this case. Talking about the facilities master plan. Is going to be done through the contract. Via a work order. With a firm that is a specialist in that area. Typically, those are architectural firms. In this case, the scenario would be, uh, Turner and Townsend Herry would serve as the facilitator to find the best firm. That would come in and do a facilities master plan in conjunction with the library design and construction project. In the same way that they would go out and hire. An electrical subcontractor to come in and do the work that needed to bring, uh, 23129 East Mission up to code.
Okay. I guess my. My main concern, I, I appreciate your answer on that question, that, that helps me a lot. I guess my main concern is that I feel like we're doing this backwards. And that we're. At least for me, I would feel much better if we said, okay, we think that, I mean, even if it's just a ballpark. As Councilmember Kennedy said, we think this is going to cost 5 million or whatever. Because then it opens up the possibility, no offense to you, Jonathan, but it opens up the possibility that we could have received other proposals. And. Obviously, you guys did a great job on Trailhead. I'm not, I'm not disputing that. You guys are a great company, but. I think we have a responsibility to, to taxpayers to make sure that we have more than one proposal. And so that's, and that's where I keep getting stuck.
And, and hopefully, uh, I can help you out there and I appreciate, I understand the sentiment, uh, and appreciate the concern. I, I just want to reiterate that from, from our perspective. Turner and Townsend Herry is, is not designing and is not constructing. The new library and is not performing the facilities master plan. They are serving as the project manager. They are serving as the owner's representative. The city is the owner. We're hiring an owner's representative. To go out and organize all of these moving pieces. With the, uh, desire, the goal at the end to have. A library that the community has input in saying, here's what we want a 40-year facility to look like. And on a work order by work order basis, the council making decisions. To authorize those movements and expend those funds. And so.
I, I get that. I, I'm saying that, um, I feel like if we would have been able to start off the process by saying, okay. Our target for this project's going to be 5 million or whatever, whatever the number might be. That maybe we, maybe. That feedback that we got about really this is not being, um, something we typically pursue. Maybe it would have been something other companies would have typically pursued.
It's impossible to say with certainty whether that is, and, and I'll reiterate that, that one piece of feedback that I got was. And what I would consider an independent answer. It's not, it's, it's impossible to say whether that is a prevailing thought out there or not. And it's also impossible to know whether if. We take this back out to the market, we would get more statements of qualification.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Two things, I think that the opportunity for us to. Give a different dollar amount, I think we had that opportunity during the budget process to do that if I'm, if I'm hearing and remembering how things work correctly. But when I think about, um. What we're potentially asking, um, this company to do or any company that would have responded. Similar in, I guess what I'm coming to is that, um, similar to, um, we need an engineer to develop our road. We like the, the. Extra turn lane going over Harvard, all that stuff that we did. We hired an expert to do that, to give us the dollar figure. So that we would understand it. And I feel like maybe that's where we could have done better as a council. And I don't know how we would have done it because we aren't experts in, in engineering and designing things. That's why we're paying somebody to, to do that. We're looking at a contract for somebody to do that. But we didn't even have, um, a ballpark figure other than, you know, $2 million. Cause we just don't know those things. So I feel like that's why we're trying to look at having a company come in and give us. Is it 2 million? Is it 5 million? And then we, we ratchet things back from there and then we go through the budget process and we have all those opportunities to, um. To figure out what we're going to pay for and what we're not going to pay for. And if we're going to have that off ramp, you remember the off ramp we had with Trailhead? I mean, I think that we have, there were so many opportunities for us to give input on what we felt, um, the citizens wanted, what the taxpayers wanted. And what we could afford, um, or what we were willing to, um, afford at the time. So I feel like, uh, whether it's, it's backwards or forwards, I think that, um, it, it's still the same process where we need to hire somebody. Who has the right, um, expertise and knowledge of the industry to manage this product, project for us. Yeah, uh, so I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anybody's saying, I think that whether the cart's before the horse or the horse is after the cart, I'm not sure. But it's a little bit cyclical with, um, we need somebody to do that. To give us a scope and, and cost and everything for, for the project so that we can make an informed decision about what we're going to pay for or not.
Any other, uh, Councilmember Spencer?
Thank you. So, you know, going back to my earlier comments and to kind of echo what, what's been said already. It, it's clear that the budget's going to be more than 2 million. And so, uh, my, my first question would be, do we have the ability to hire just to get the cost estimate rather than moving forward with the project management? Based on, you know, whatever, uh, whatever we decide we want to have in this library, do we have the ability to? Hire somebody just to get the cost estimate upfront. Rather than moving forward saying this is going to be the project manager.
Mark, do you have a thought on?
Yes, and I'll ask Jonathan and even Lisa, if Lisa's on the line to provide some context here. The, the answer ultimately is yes. However, in order for anyone to be able to. Associate what we're asking for with a budget number, we're going to have to define that. And part of the definition of that is what the public input phase, the programming phase would be all about. And so, you, that's. I, I don't, I hesitate to put a percentage on that, Jonathan, but that's a hefty percentage of what you're already going to be doing. If you look, uh, in the scope of work order one that was previously on the agenda, you're going to see all of those. Activities being listed as scope items in work order one.
If I may, um, just from a, you know, the process that we went through with Trailhead. It was a very iterative process. The way we're approaching the project manager in this particular contract actually. Does exactly the opposite of writing a blank track check. It limits. Each and every decision to a task order, much like we have our on-call engineer. This is the appropriate. Process. To go through to get to the place where council can actually. Have enough information to make a decision about. Have enough information to make a decision about what. That the budget for the library might be, or if there's opportunities to phase or whatever, however you want to approach it. But we internally do not have. The capabilities of. Providing you with that, we do need the expert on board and whether it's. Whether it's here, he Townsend who and Jonathan Miller, who. Obviously very successfully took us through the process with Trailhead in a crazy. Environment where we had, we blinked and. Prices were escalating by ten and twenty percent, we had, we had all sorts of issues with supply chain, etc. Even in that environment, I think they did a great job of keeping counsel. In the know and giving you enough information to make decisions. And providing opportunities for the community to weigh in, that's it was, it was a great engagement process that we went through with that. And I would fully expect that the same thing would happen with the library. And by doing it by work orders or task orders, you're limiting the scope and at any point in time you can say, okay. We have enough information, let's talk about this, let's see and and reassess your approach. Just a thought.
Councilmember Dan.
Yeah, I just want to recapitulate my perspective that Turner Townsend and here appear to be exceptionally qualified to discover. What we as a council need to know to set an appropriate budget for the project. I think that's really what the decision we have in front of us is about. To hire a partner, I call it representative agent of the buyer of the buyer us. To discover the information to uncover uncover what these amounts should be. To the to the notion of what the budget is or should be, that's absolutely the authority of this group. Once we have the information to be like me to make the decision. So I support the selection of Turner Townsend here for the project management position.
Councilmember Spencer.
Thank you. So it was mentioned during the presentation that and and I may have this term wrong, progressive design build. You, you're just barely scratching the surface at about the two million, more likely it's going to be approved to move forward. At the three to four million dollars, is that right? Do I have that correct, Jonathan?
It it really depends on programming and to what Mark said, which I think is an important element is community input. Because I would hate to make assumptions about what the scope would be and then community input. Changes what that scope becomes and it grows or shrinks because I think community engagement is a huge part of this. So I I just think it's so difficult if if somebody gives me a scope, I mean, we can, we can put. Budget numbers to define scope all day long, but it's just what is that scope?
I'll just, so I'll just to follow, follow that up, I guess I I would say for me, it would make sense to. Perhaps put that RFQ back out there with a more realistic number, I know we don't have an exact number, but it's clear it's not two point one. And. To build on that, I wasn't here at the beginning of the process for Trailhead. Had I been, I would not have been in favor to to going to bond to to fund that. So I also would not be in favor to be borrowing any sort of money to pay for this project, so I think. Whatever that number it is that we come up with, we have to determine whether we have that available or whether it's going to take us some time. To save that up, so to speak, and I'm also curious, a follow up question to that is, do we have any idea? Whether the church that is there now is interested in staying or are, have they made plans to leave or otherwise?
They are in development, I believe they purchased property and are at least designing a new facility, so they are. They have terminated their lease, which expires on April thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, they bought the property next to the Tier Point building, which is across from the the street from the library. The one there where nobody is, there's like an L shaped piece of property there between Mattson and Mission. They've already designed their building as well.
Quick follow up question to Kyle. If if I remember correctly, we were holding the money that they were paying in rent. For the possibility of using it for the renovation, what is that number right now and what do you think it's going to be by April next year?
If you give me a second, I can give you a solid figure.
Okay, well, I mean, I kind of have the same question as as Councilmember Spencer had. And that is, Mark, what what kind of ideas are we looking at here to to fund this? If, you know, let's say it comes back again, nobody knows for sure, but I mean, if it comes back four to five million dollars ish. Maybe it's a little bit less, maybe it's a little bit more. What is, what would be your recommendation on how we would go about funding that?
So there are, I don't have a specific recommendation sitting here, but there are three primary methods and then variations of those. We would use. Fund balances essentially reserve funds. We could create a new revenue source and you heard Jan D mention. A grant opportunity that is a creation of a new revenue source potentially. Or as you heard, Councilmember Spencer mentioned just a moment ago, you could consider issuing debt. All three of those as individual pieces or parts of each and all of those as pieces. Could be a strategy to pay for whatever the price tag is ultimately that the council decides on.
So in April of twenty twenty five, we should have, we'll be approaching four hundred thousand dollars in the library capital fund.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I know, and thank you for mentioning that, Mark. I I remember Jan D mentioning that as far as some sort of funds that could be, is it estate state funds that might? Possibly come down as far as a grant of some sort.
So the State Department of Commerce has a library, a library capital improvements grant. You can request up to two million dollars, it is a matching grant. And so we submitted an application to them. Asking for two million dollars because the library, the city invested two million dollars in purchasing a building. So that was our match, so we can get up to two million dollars. We will hear back in September if we're on the shortlist. And then we will know once the state budget goes through at the, you know, April, March of next year, if we are awarded those funds. If we are awarded the funds, I want to say we have three years to allocate the money and we do have to promise to. Completely build a building, finish a building.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Kennedy. I don't think we can hear you. There we go.
Actually, the mayor, the mayor had her hand up first.
Oh, I beg your pardon, Mayor.
Yeah, just a quick clarification with Jan D, we can re. If I remember correctly, if we would get that grant, however much of it is, we can reimburse ourselves for money spent and it may be more of a question for Kyle.
So well, I'll have to review the grant application, but. A lot of times that is.
Thanks, Jan D, go ahead.
So with the grant application, we had to provide a scope. And we can use the monies for the items that are on the scope. We kept our scope a little bit broad, so saying things like we're going to build. Meeting rooms or we're going to build a children's space, we didn't say we're going to build a children's space that's three point five square feet. So we kept it a little bit broad.
But if we spend the money, then if if we, if we then get the grant, we can reimburse ourselves for what we spend.
Yes, as long as it was listed in the scope, so yeah, we should be fine.
I just want to make sure that was clear, thanks.
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
I was just going to follow up with a comment is that if if people recall back when we were looking at. Ask the citizens to spend the nine million or plus, whatever it was for a building to move the library, maybe city hall in. What was being discussed at the time is that what would we do with the existing building we have where the library is? And it was looked at, we probably get rent of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year on something like that. That is on our future agenda to bring that up and discuss it, but because it did come up tonight of funding. I think that is an avenue also that we could get part of the rent for part of the building. Or if the city decides we're going to use utilize it better for. City Hall use, then we can certainly go that route, but there is that possibility. Where we could get revenue from there, therefore, if that was dedicated to the library, it's another revenue source, I think is important. For future of the library, thank you.
Okay, I'll just, I'll make one more comment and I was just going to mention. When this issue first came up, when we were talking about buying the building. I actually was one of the ones who voted against it and the reason for that was not because I didn't want to buy the building, but rather because. I was nervous about how we pay for the renovations to make it into the library that we all hope and want, so. My position hasn't changed on that, I'm still nervous about this and and the fact that. Two of the three ideas in terms of how to fund it, if we actually have to do that are taking out another bond or. Raising revenue, which means, you know, coming up with a tax increase or coming up with some sort of way to get that money and to pay for it. Makes me very hesitant about it, but I appreciate everyone's questions and I appreciate the presentation as well. Does anyone else have any other thoughts or comments?
Councilmember Dan. I just want to clarify, have we asked all the questions that may be necessary to consider Turner Townsend and here for the project management position? Is there any other questions that need to be aired right now to kind of think about that decision?
Anybody have any more that they want to ask Jonathan? Okay, thank you, Jonathan, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jan D, appreciate it.
Mayor Protem, I think Mayor had her hand up.
Oh, yes, Mayor, go ahead.
Just a real quick clarification, I think when, you know, when Mark was talking about, you know, other forms of revenue, I think he was speaking directly to that grant. I don't, I don't think we, there's been any discussion whatsoever about raising any taxes or anything for this. I just want to make sure nobody's panicking over that, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, all right, so we'll move on to reports and inquiries first from city council. Anybody have any?
Yes. Hey, I just want to thank all of all the members of the community for patience and last Saturday's garage sale. I think everybody had a pretty good time and yeah, I think that they got a lot of stuff out, so thanks for everybody and patience in that.
I was just going to quickly mention, I was at the farmer's market two weeks ago, we had a lot of good traffic. In there as well, and it was a beautiful day. And one of the questions, I don't know if Jen is on. Online with us, but one of the questions I got asked probably more than the. The topic that was very much discussed at that time was what in the world is going on with all of our weeds? So I don't, I told him I didn't know the answer to that question that I would bring it up to the next council meeting, so. Jen, I don't know if you can just briefly comment on what we do with the trying to keep the weeds in check?
Well, I'm not going to try to attempt mother nature, but it is a weed year and there are weeds everywhere, so we're. Doing our best to tackle them, but yeah, it's been, we've had a lot of fairly significant rainfalls. Rainfall events and that always contributes to a lot of weeds.
Thanks, Jen, anybody else have any? Council comments, Councilmember Kurtz.
I just wanted to ask Jen if we need more goats.
Well, no. Okay, I think we're goat goat maxed out.
Okay.
That would be a nay.
That's good. I do have one update too, we did the last meeting for the balanced calendar for CVSD and the the committee did present their. Experience, not necessarily recommendations to the board, the school board, so. We'll meet again in the fall and then still, I think there's still more discussion about whether the balance calendar is something that works for. The school district, I know other districts are having those conversations as well, so. I don't think it'll be the last that we hear about a balanced calendar, so it was a good experience and lots of really good people that gave a lot of input into the process, so.
All right, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, farmer's market, farmer's market was windy, we almost lost a tent a couple of times. Got a flood when the water had. Deposited up top and all of a sudden it hit the side of the the bathroom, hit the electrical, therefore came down and flooded. Everything that was there, other than that, it was a pretty good turnout, even though everything else was going on. I would like to reiterate the what I mentioned here some time ago. Is it open up that booth for individuals from Parks and Art and Planning Commission, other individuals? I know that there's been some talk that maybe one or two of us are taking. Volunteer for too much time, but I want to point out in the last two weekends that we haven't had any money there. For the afternoon, so we've had the individuals who were there from nine to eleven agree to stay on. If we don't have that, then we're going to have an empty booth. And quite honestly, an empty booth is not the worst thing there in the world because people come in. Basically to look at the map of the city because that's really what they're interested in. So I just want to reiterate for everybody who's out there, there is plenty of slots open. If you think that somebody is having too many slots. Volunteer and I'm sure that individual or individuals will say, go for it. Thank you.
One other thing I was going to mention about the farmer's market and I know we don't have an official policy on this and I'm not suggesting that we adopt an official. Policy on this, but there were several times this year and I don't know that it happened last year, but. Particularly one of the times that I was in the booth where we had folks bring their dog. Not folks from the farmer's market, but folks actually attending to the booth brought their dog, the dog. Went potty in the farm, in the booth, which which was not necessarily the greatest situation and we also had. Apparently from what I'm told, somebody almost tripped over one of the leashes as well, so I would just. Suggest that we probably need to be careful about bringing animals into the booth in the future, but. Obviously, we don't have an official policy on it as well. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mayor, Mayor's report.
Okay, hi from Vancouver, everybody, I think. Mark, Mike, Annie and I are all in four different corners here, so. Hotels here are a little, a little bit of slim pickings and as you can see, I feel like I'm back in my childhood bedroom, I found a really cute. True bread and bed and breakfast, non Airbnb for cheaper than the the conference hotel was, so it's kind of kind of nice. So we're really looking forward to the conference. Some things of note that I've signed up for, there's a couple of sessions on engagement. There's a session on capital planning, funding and communicating about that. Big focus on disaster recovery this year, I think I mentioned at a previous meeting that there's, I think it's a four hour session on Friday before the. Closing session, National Incident Management System Overview for senior officials. So I will definitely be attending that and as well as round table for strong mayors, they've got. Round tables for the different kinds of government this time around, so it'll be very interesting and then. Identifying, preventing and resolving conflicts of interest, so that was the, that has not been a topic I've seen here before, so. There's lots of others on top of that, really looking forward to it. I was a light calendar for city meetings the last couple of weeks, we did have SRTC. Though most of that was what we had already heard from Carl Otterstrom from STA with regards to their future plans, but I got to listen through that again. Mark and I met with Avista, we have a new representative. Mainly on the topic of kites being flown near the high, high voltage trans. Transmission lines, excuse me, over near Orchard Park and River Rock Park over in the River District, so we are going to be working with them. On some additional signage and we have asked her to come do a short presentation to ten minute limit. With then questions to the council on that and then just kind of reintroduce herself, so she. Melanie Rose was our representative for years, she's moved on to different, a different area. And then we had Colton stepped in for a while and he went off to, I think he, did he go off to be a firefighter, I think, Mark, was that it?
That's correct, he's in the academy.
Yeah, big, big, big career change there and then this this new gal, so I think she's going to be great to work with, so we'll get her introduced to all of you guys. And then I did send out yesterday links to those previous trainings that we had done for the council in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Hopefully everybody, you know, gets a chance to, some of them are kind of long, but it's well worth a refresher and just a reminder. You know. The council has certain authority. And I have certain authority and, you know, if if. If there is something that you guys, something, one of you or two of you or however many want to bring up to talk about doing. Bring it to the council, mention it during council comments or during future workshops, bring it in front of the council, please don't call Mark or any of the other staff to give them direction to do something. You guys need to make those decisions as a council, so I just like to reiterate that, so I think that's, oh, and then to Councilmember Kennedy's point. Mark and I have already had the discussion and we are reaching out to the other commissions, planning commission, parks and arts. And such to see about their interest in help in participating in the farmer's market, so we will be making adjustments to the calendar signup as appropriate when I get back. That's it for me. That's it for me.
All right, Mark, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um as you're looking down the events and reminders, we'll uh skip the AWC Annual Conference. You know, we're all, or at least four of us are here. The the real reason that I brought that up is to remind the council that um I am on the board or the committee, rather, that is reviewing the state legislative priorities uh for twenty twenty five. And so as we go through that process, our second meeting um is tomorrow morning. And so we'll be talking about what the legislative priorities uh coming out of AWC may look like. So I will definitely be bringing a report back to you uh out of that meeting and then looking for input as we shape the final product of that so that we can get have as much influence as 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 we can into that process so that those uh priorities are are being emphasized in the next legislative session. Um, Juneteenth holiday is actually tomorrow, Wednesday, June nineteenth, and so City Hall and Library are going to be closed and observance. Um, the city council retreat is coming up on June twenty sixth, which is a week from tomorrow, I believe. And uh just a reminder, uh this will go out separately, but just a reminder here, if anyone is interested in uh attending that, it is a five PM start, not a six PM start, a five PM start. Uh, and that will be at the Trailhead Rotary Room. Oh, and we'll talk more about the agenda later on in in my report. Uh, the Movies in the Park uh calendar is firing up again, starting on July third uh at Pavilion Park. Uh, and that is also wrapped into um the July fourth Community Celebration that takes place over July third and fourth. Uh, that's always a really popular um event that the city puts on, and we're looking forward to uh the best one happening this year. So um that is coming up quickly, July third and fourth. And then as a reminder, the July fourth date uh is the Independence Day holiday. And so again, City Hall and Library will be closed and observance. Uh, before we move on to the others, any questions about the reminders? Hearing none, I will um open the floor also to questions about the departmental reports that you should have received. Um, and we'll give council members the opportunity to ask any of the department heads questions um about any of those reports if you uh desire to do that.
Doesn't look like we have any.
Okay, um item number three, Alert Spokane. I I put this on there simply because uh the fire marshal, if he has not already done so, will shortly be formally declaring wildland fire season and bringing forward a burn ban. Um, and we've already had a a fire, as you know. And so I just wanted to remind uh both council and any viewing audience, and we'll be putting information on our social media channels about this, reminding folks to um sign up for Alert Spokane if you've not already done so. It's uh flexible to the extent that you can put multiple locations and multiple phone numbers to get information. Um, there, there is some uh concern that some of the alerts aren't specific enough. And Spokane County Emergency Management is looking into that. And so there may be some changes coming fairly soon to depending on the kind of alert that is going out to to bring more specificity to it. But regardless, just a reminder that when alerts come out, to make sure that you're following up and making uh proof positive of what it actually is, where it is, and what you need to do in response. Um, there are other applications out there that help identify some of those. We're not endorsing any of those, but there are other applications out there. And so we're at that point on the calendar where this is uh an issue again, and I just wanted to remind everybody that that service is out there. Uh, to reiterate the mayor's point, this is kind of in conjunction with some of the uh information that uh Michelle is going to bring our new Avista liaison. Um, I'm sure that you've all heard about their Public Safety Power Shut Off Program that actually uh came out of some legislation that was passed this last last session. So Michelle is going to brief the council on uh that program so that you have all of the information and can uh ask questions of her um as they start to implement that. There was a, there was an alert today in the news about a potential uh shut off. So um that is a hot topic and she'll be there to address it on July second. Moving, any questions about that before I move on to the last topic? Okay, so looking at the uh draft agenda for the city council retreat, um, this, this is in part uh crafted based on some of the one-on-one conversations that the facilitator Dave Childs has had with uh council members. I realize all of those conversations haven't taken place yet. Um, some of this agenda is also particularly the last item uh is based on consensus that council provided uh several meetings ago, and we talked about whether or not there was an appetite to reformulate uh some council committees. So as a practical uh exercise, that was the topic that we used to uh take all of these other things that were being discussed at the agenda and and put them into practice in having that governing discussion about whether or not council desires the recreation of those committees and then what they would do, right? And so if you look at the agenda, um it it essentially is broken down into three blocks. And if you add those times up, it is more than the allotted time, and that's on purpose because we can take the break out. We can if we leave the break in, we can adjust some of the others to to get to the uh four hour time limit. So don't, don't necessarily worry about that. Um, but what we want to do is we want to have plenty of opportunity for uh council members to understand uh some of the motivations that each of the other council members have, including the mayor. Talk about some strategic objectives, talk about vision, uh talk about what um good governance looks like, uh facilitating uh a discussion about high performing councils and governments in general. And then again, using all of that in a practical exercise to focus on the council committee uh process. And so that's the overview at this point, the draft agenda at this point. I just want to throw that out and allow for council to ask questions or provide feedback.
Quick question, um Mark, is this meeting being recorded?
Recorded, yes. Streamed, no.
Okay, but so people will be able to watch it later.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Doesn't look like it.
And I, this item is not on the report, but since it's come up a couple of times, I want to address it and and make sure that council uh gets some clarity on some misinformation that that's out there um that you've either heard or or may hear. There are multiple pieces of engagement that we're planning for the twenty twenty five budget development. The first one is a discussion forum. We've not created a survey about the budget. There is not a survey out there about the budget. We've not build the forum as a survey. It's a discussion forum, similar to any other kind of discussion board that you would run across in an online uh forum uh or area, website, whatever. And so what this is designed to do is to get people talking about the budget. Um, you can, unlike a survey, you can make a comment and someone else can comment about your priorities. We're monitoring that to make sure that there is no inappropriate, whether it's bullying or people coming in and using uh, you know, uh inappropriate language, slurs, any of that kind of stuff. But in general, we're allowing that dialogue to take place so that we can have uh some clear understanding and a discussion forum about what individuals may prioritize from their own personal vantage point to include in the twenty twenty five budget. There will be other pieces that come along. And those other pieces, like the budget forum, will be discussed at the uh Community Engagement Commission. The budget forum is something that was discussed with the Community Engagement Commission last year. Um, it was, this is the second year we've done this. As you'll recall, uh some of the feedback that we received from the budget forum last year was included in the unfunded projects list. We specifically got four items from the budget forum discussion board and council voted to include those in the unfunded project list. So from that vantage point, this is a very useful tool for us. There will be other tools. We will introduce other tools throughout the rest of the budget calendar. The forum will be open through roughly mid-September when we make the first budget uh deadline of submitting budgets to the mayor for her review. Um, otherwise, it is open, it's available. As far as I know, we've made uh one social media post about it. There will be others. Um, but this is not the only tool that we're going to be using for a budget engagement. Um, there, there will be others and the new ones will be discussed um in the city or I'm sorry, in the Community Engagement Commission.
Any questions or anything from Mark? Yes, council member Kennedy. Your microphone, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. I would like to uh throw out consideration to have added to the first part of asking the council uh the reasons for them getting involved in this stuff is the question was brought to me for two individuals over a period of time is that what is the oath of office? What is the oath of office meant to me? How do I understand that? And what do I stand for around that? I would like to have a question addressed to all the council members. Is that not only reason why we all chose to run and serve for whatever reason, but what does that oath mean that we stand there and raise our hand and swear to? Thank you.
Thank you, council member Kennedy. All right, anything else, Mark?
Uh, no, Mayor Protem, that concludes my report.
All right, thanks very much. Now we'll move on to Parks and Arts Commission and Nancy's here.
Good evening, Mayor in Vancouver and council. Once again, it's always a pleasure to be here. We had a great dedication ceremony on June eighth at Pavilion Park and we were able to introduce the uh basketball mural artist, uh Danielle Davis. Unfortunately, Josh Thomas, the skate park artist, was unable to attend. And then Rob Hartman, who is uh on the board of Hoop Fest, who is also a Liberty Lake resident, was there uh representing Hoop Fest. So it was a great time. We had a scrimmage by the Liberty Lake Police Department, including the man behind me, um against Spokane Valley Fire. So that was fun and a lot of kids uh were there and got a kick out of it. And it was really wonderful to see families using the courts and kids of all ages on the skate park. And uh we even had a a woman that rides by regularly on a bicycle. She doesn't do sports, but she says every time I look over there, I love the color. So it was a great time. By all, we thanked the mayor and council member Van Orman for their attendance as well. The uh Bicycle Community Project was again discussed at our last meeting, and I believe we're going to form a citizen a led committee to help us analyze the survey results as we uh move into our grant application period so we can keep uh Liberty Lake safe and friendly for bicyclists. I just saw in the news today that they were closing streets in Spokane. Of course, it wasn't a very good night to do that, to have, I can't remember what they call it, but
Summer parkways.
Summer parkways, that's it. Um, and anyway, be fun. Maybe someday we'll do something like that here because there are a lot of bikers here in the city. Oh, let's see, I have slides. Moving on, I've already forgot about slides. Move on to the next slide, please. And then the next one, we made it through bicycles. I just get myself talking and forget I have props. Um, we're removing uh renew uh reviewing the park and ball fields fee structure and uh are the new um recreation coordinator in the Parks Department, Mikel, has been uh doing a lot of work and helping us to understand cost recovery and how we can be more user friendly and how our fees can be structured and the time periods in a better way so that we get more efficient use of our fields. So I'm excited uh for us to finish that up and send it to you folks uh for approval in twenty twenty five. Next slide. This is just dear to my heart. Look at these kids, Ridgeline High School students, and that art is absolutely phenomenal. Uh, we had purchased the frames. They've all been framed and uh staff is going to work on soon hanging the art up. It it will be up for a year until we get another round um from these student artists and their work really is just phenomenal. And we'll be working on a way to get some certificates to them to recognize their work. We have the call to artists out for the whimsical map, which will be on the Trailhead side of the building, the pro shop side of the building at Trailhead. And we've had a few submissions, so we'll be going through those um forming a process in which to select one, and we hope to have that mural completed in twenty twenty four. But that art, that was, that's a great project. And I think especially once we get a restaurant in there, there'll be a lot of community um that will see that. Next slide, please. This project is a little more challenging. Uh, we did do a call to artists and we've got zero submissions. So we're going to expand our call um to artists uh somewhat out of our area and we may have to uh change the installation time. We'll just kind of see how that goes, but it may have to be a carryover project to next year depending on how it's going. Um, it is a sculpture piece, so it's, I guess, harder to find people. I don't know if everyone else is doing a sculpture or what, but we're gonna keep putting it out there and we'll see what comes in. But uh we have time because we can coordinate it if we end up doing it next year with the uh DOT release of the signal boxes and do that art and everything at the same time. So we're still working on that. Next slide. This is the uh location for the historical um outlook for Pavilion Park. Uh, there's the red circled area. We'll be removing some trees and bushes that don't look that good anyway. Uh, there may be some uh redoing of the ticket booth, which needs a little cosmetic facelift because it'll be more exposed um with the landscaping down. It's in the hands of the Historical Society now, so we're waiting to see what they come up with, and then we'll do a call out for the actual design of the piece, which will be fairly standard for what you're used to seeing. Um, you know, metal thing with writing on it and informations. But I think it'll be really good because people have a lot of questions about the history of the park and explaining the mural a little bit and bringing forth, you know, some of our rich history. So it'll be a fun project and that's moving ahead as planned. Next slide. We're looking forward to our workshop with you folks uh July second. Uh, our meeting is actually July first. So we'll be scurrying around, trying to get all the information so we can share with you uh what our vision is for next year and more importantly, get your feedback. Um, because this, this report here really isn't, isn't the way we do that. So we're hoping a workshop as we go into our strategic plan update and our budget will help us uh to get through that. We had our student commissioner, Allison Pegram. Her last meeting was her last me, was her last meeting. And she's moving on to college. She has just been a phenomenal young woman in every project she has volunteered for. She's carried to fruitation and we were really hoping to hang on to her for the summer, but she's excited about her future plans as she moves uh on towards college. Uh, so we've talked to Ridgeline and put it out there. We'd like another student commissioner. That's my understanding. We've received at least one application, and I'm sure the mayor will be setting up an interview and we'll hopefully get another student on board. These are typically one-year uh positions because most of them are seniors and then uh moving on. We also still have our adjunct position open, and as of this conversation, I don't believe uh we have any applications, but um we do have one of our two adjunct positions filled and so far that's working out. So it's not critical, but we would like to go ahead because as you remember, last time I was here, you moved up one of our adjunct to a voting position. So it's a good way to get people in and trained and then um be fully ready to go as a voting commissioner. So lots of exciting things going on and uh we're again looking forward to the workshop on July second. Any questions? All right. Well, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, Planning Commission, Mr. Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for being here, for allowing me here. Um, we've been fairly busy. Um, as you know, one of the big major things we're dealing with is a comprehensive plan update. Uh, it's not due till twenty twenty six, but I'm sure Director Key has shared with you the uh spreadsheet and all the work that has to be done. As part of that, there's a lot of new things going on uh that they are requiring from the state. There's new housing laws that you, I'm sure you're aware of that we'll be addressing uh as well as environmental and I'm sure you're aware of that we'll be addressing as well as environmental and climate change issues that have to be dealt with in planning. And so as part of that, we have urged all of our commissioners to log into the Department of Commerce's website. And get on their mailing list because they are doing some seminars. I attended one last week. All related to us updating this comprehensive plan. So that is an ongoing thing. You'll hear more about it as we continue. The other two things that we're dealing with are third-party requests for changes in zoning issues. One is the company called Top Golf that wants to put a facility here and they have asked for lighting changes primarily to do with. Timeframes. They want to be able to extend times till 12:30 in the morning during the week and 1:30 in the morning on the weekends. And they have not told us exactly where they are looking yet. They have not purchased property. But it's in the M1, M2, C1 and C2 zones that they would want to change this. It's fairly innocuous, the lighting. In fact, they compared it to Ridgeline High School. Just so you'll know, the lumen output for a Top Golf facility is about 720,000 lumen. That sounds like a lot until you look at Ridgeline High and it's 9.2 million lumens. So they use the same type of lights, except they're much, much more. Less intrusive, if you will. So we are moving that forward. We will have, I think we are having public discussion at our next meeting next month and then we'll hopefully get it along to you. Our recommendation in August. The second one is from an unnamed third party and they're looking to change. Issue in the C1, C2 and the RRD, the River District C zones. To go from eight gas pumps to 12. As an accessory operation to a business. There's a lot of speculation about who that business is. You've probably seen it in the paper and on the TV and everything else about who that might be. As yet that no one has been named, but we are looking at that. The other thing that we will. Do as part of those zones is eliminate truck stops as part of that. So we will are looking at that really hard. That's basically it. We got a lot on our plate and any questions?
Any questions for Joe?
Very grateful for the work of Plan Commission.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Community Engagement Commission, Mr. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, I was going to come up and talk about the farmer's market, but I think we've talked enough about getting more commissions involved and everything. We had a very intense, not intense, but very informative meeting last week discussing that. What we would like to see and what I think is in motion now is that we would like to see a rotation of. The two other commissions along with the library to where we're there every other, you know, once a month type of thing, every four weeks. But with the in CEC, with the Community Engagement Commission. It would be an exception with us if there was something going on that we needed to be there, we would definitely be there. But it's in the process now, the mayor and Mark are working on it and, you know, we'll see what happens from there. Couple of other things that I wanted to cover. Let me get my iPad back up here. Right now, the community, the commission, we held a special workshop on May 3rd with Lisa Key. And she informed us of the, of the upcoming comprehensive plan. And the process and goals of the public participation and the components of that. Lisa's plan plans the meeting to be further with the commission with that more dialogue and issues to target the audience. And the different of methods to be connecting with the plans, visions of the stakeholders. So, you know, it's, it takes some time. She's going to definitely use the CEC to get our input from the community. And, you know, proceed from there. One other thing, the commission also talked about ideas of having a presence in other public events. And what we're looking at, we're looking at Barefoot in the Park, putting out, having a booth at Barefoot in Park, having a booth at the Thursday night. Rocky Hills event out there. Whenever there's a special event, we're going to try to have a booth at those events. To become more engaged with the community, if you will. One other thing that we just started, I know it's, it's only June, but we are starting our budget process. We want to have that fulfilled by, by August, so we can have everything presented and ready to go to the. Make our presentations to the council so we can make sure we get what we want for next 2025. That's it. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. Do we have anyone from Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District? I don't see anybody here in chambers. Anybody online? Okay, all right, we will just conclude our reports and inquiries. All right, we are up to item 9A, the Stormwater Master Plan Workshop Discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am going to try and get you back some time because I'm going to go really quick through this. And because we're not really asking you to make a decision tonight on this, we are, we will be asking you for some input before we. Send a final draft to ecology. So next slide, please. So just wanted to talk to you about how we got here. We've had a few workshops, but most recently on May 21st, we had a workshop on the draft. Stormwater Master Plan. What I wanted to point out is when we provided that to you, there are section seven, which was the financing rates. Section eight implementation and appendix B, which was stormwater capital improvement and rate study. And appendix C, the rate study and fee memos. Were to be completed following. We wanted to have a workshop with you and engage you in the conversation about what, what that should look like. And so we had that workshop on June 4th. And you reviewed the rate study and two different fee scenarios. Based upon that workshop, council recommended moving forward with inclusion of fee scenario number one in the master plan. But there was also a request for a third scenario to be developed with fees increasing at an increment of $5 per year through 2030. That should say 2030, sorry. Next slide, please. So in your packets tonight, you actually have the updated. Swamp that includes that basically filled out those to be determined sections of the, of the plan. With the information from the rate study. Which also impacted timing for the capital facilities plan. So there were a few sections in section two, there were two specific tables that had some to be determined columns. But really what you're seeing is a new section seven with financing and rates on page 27 and 28. A new table nine, which is the proposed rate increase, which is based on scenario one. In new section eight, we had a very just a skeleton of a section on implementation. That's page 28 through 31. Which includes a new table 10, site-specific stormwater capital projects rankings and priorities. Table 11, programmatic stormwater capital projects. Table 12, stormwater utility program planning activities. Table 13, stormwater activity fee recommendations and table 14, operation and maintenance. Planning activity recommendations, but these were all again, things that were influenced by either the, the, the. Rate study memo or the timing of the capital facilities. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. It's a repeat. There's also at the end of this, an implementation, an implementation. Chart. I'm not going to bore you with the details, but it really summarizes the whole chapter. Next slide, please. With a schedule, by the way. So there's also a new chapter nine, based upon the conversations with you regarding grant opportunities and. Appendix B has been filled out with our capital improvement projects list with site-specific projects and programmatic details. And the timing that we discussed in the rate memo. Appendix C, which is a revised resource planning and stormwater fee memo. What's significant about that is that. You both see the resource planning inputs, the detail, the data behind the scenarios and you also see. This stormwater technical memorandum related to, which includes recommended rates based on scenario one, but also. Has appendices which have a scenario two and most importantly, a new scenario three. And so Kyle's going to walk you through. The differences between scenario one, which is what you recommended at the last meeting and scenario three, which was the scenario that was requested. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyle.
Excellent. Next slide, please, Lee. And so this, this sheet you have in front of you here is what we discussed at the last council meeting. And it is really the more aggressive of scenario one versus scenario two. If you recall scenario two. We built in a lot of this first round of stormwater infrastructure replacement into out years. And so we were essentially deferring maintenance and deferring replacement. In scenario two, council had indicated that we do have the capacity to be a little bit more aggressive with planning our stormwater replacement on the capital side. And so this was a scenario that we had landed on at the end of that discussion on. At our last council meeting. And so I'll draw your eyes to the highlighted modeled rate. There about halfway through your screen where we had decided based on what we think is going to happen with, with the APA. To hold steady, evaluate what is the eventual outcome of the APA on the county side. And then make some incremental increases in out years from there. And so you can see in the bottom right-hand table there. We will start fiscal year 2030, you know, with about, you know, a little less than $250,000. And so we'll toggle back and forth between these two as we, as we discuss this, but Lee, if you go to the next slide, please. So this was the modeled rate that we had included as an alternate scenario based on council feedback. With an incremental $5 increase each year through fiscal year 2030. And again, I will draw your eyes to the bottom right-hand corner. We have a little bit more of a robust beginning fund balance, not surprisingly with. A little bit more of a measured and aggressive rate increase to get us up to speed with what a lot of other entities are charging. For stormwater. And so you'll, you'll see this positions us. So scenario three does position us better going into some of the. Unknowns and out-year capital improvements. We can easily tackle what's, tackle what's in front of us with either mechanism for increases, but. Scenario three gives us a little bit more of a cushion as we get into those out years. And so what we'll position or what we'll provide to ecology is. Scenario one with a scenario three alternate and we will essentially ask council come budget time, what their preference is going forward.
Kyle, can I ask you a quick question? Is there, I, I, I loved seeing scenario three, by the way, because I, I think you're right. I think it. Leaves us in the, in the best possible position. Is there anything bad about scenario three? I mean, other than the fact that it would increase the most. By 2033, but is there anything we're not seeing that?
Absolutely not. It is, it's council's appetite for the balance versus the modeled rate increase.
Okay, thank you.
So next slide, please. So I did want to, I did want to point out that if it is council's desire, we could swap out scenario three for the draft plan. But, but we're still not making, asking you to make a decision. If you're, if you're satisfied with the way it is right now, it gives us the latitude to, to change it in the final version. And so next slide, please. So basically, our next steps are to revise this. Final draft plan or draft final plan. If you direct us to or to, to just submit it to ecology for their review. It's about, they said that they need about a 45-day review period. It'll probably be less than that. So. Is what they've indicated to me. So we will be bringing back the final plan and rate study to you for review and adoption sometime in August. Presumably it could slip to September, but we haven't, but, but we do have the time to. To accommodate that if, if ecology takes a little longer in the review. So any questions or comments or?
Councilmember Dan.
Lisa, if there is a change to the rate plan, does ecology need to look at it again?
No, because we've included the scenario. You're not making a decision. They just, and by the way. They wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily have any concerns about your decision as the legislative body to set rates. They just want to see that you've considered what it's going to take into the future.
Lisa, can, and maybe this is a question for Kyle too. Am I understanding or am I reading these numbers correctly that under scenario one? We dip down below 100,000 in 2026, but under scenario two, it looks like we hit right at 100,000 in. 2026 and scenario three, we're above 100,000. Is that right?
That is correct. Yep.
And the difference is that, that additional 10 or the, the, the $15 instead of the $10. But again, the difference between the two is in the one scenario, in both scenarios. We expect the APA to continue and keep in mind the APA is like 30 bucks a year. And that's going to continue through until 2026, which is why we held off on any rate increases. When, if that goes away, when that goes away. We have the latitude to raise the fees and it will still be less than what our residents are paying right now. If that makes sense.
Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah. So just to confirm, so scenario three, for instance, where everybody's already paying the 30. Is that right with the APA?
Yes, that's correct.
So we wouldn't catch up to that until 2028.
Right. And here's the difference. We're not getting all $30.
Right.
The county is getting a fair share of it. We get a much smaller.
We get about a third of that.
But we were being supplemented back from the state, right?
Any other?
Well, one other question. So do we, I mean, obviously by 2030 and scenario three, well, I guess in all the scenarios, we're inching closer to break even. What, do we have an idea when we'll, we'll hit that?
Oh, and versus where we're at, like today?
Well, yeah, in any of these scenarios, because we're, we're not quite at break even for what we're bringing in based on the rate, right?
So we, we will, we will catch up to your point by 31 and beyond, I would say.
And let me make a point. We never dip below. We still have a reserve, right? It's just a lower reserve than what we have right now. So we get back to the level that we're at in 2030.
Well, and to that point, I know you guys mentioned, let's see, I'm on page 126 of, of the agenda here. Talking about increasing operating reserve for stormwater utility fund from 5% of budgeted revenues to 33%. So I would be in favor of that as well. I'm, I'm curious. If perhaps we were even more aggressive with the initial infusion of funds from the general fund to this rather than the 500K. You know, if we did 750, for instance, what that might look like. I'm just curious as to, because again, my comment in the last meeting was. In my opinion, the taxpayers have already funded this if we've got extra funds in the general fund.
So purposes, for the purposes of submitting this to ecology and getting adopted, that adopted, I don't think it's necessary for us to do that. It is certainly something we could do as part of the budget process.
Okay.
And. And my train just derailed. There was another point that, that, sorry, long night. No, it was an important point, too. Oh, the other thing is that, and you had brought this up. So two things. Number one, one of the policy recommendations is looking at building the escalator right into our fee schedule. The other one that I wanted to point out to you that is that they've provided us with a relatively robust list of grant programs in section nine. So the potential for us to go after some grants to potentially fund some of these are a definite definitely something that we will be looking at in future years.
Mayor and and council members Kurtson Kennedy, I can't see you. My computer went down. So if you have a comment, just jump in. I will assume that you don't. Counselor Spencer, did you have?
Yeah. So going back to your point about us assuming that that the that the current structure is in place, these these fees, so let's say we're starting at the $10. Are those is that $10 we're putting in there currently that the citizens are paying on top of the 30?
They are currently paying $10 on top of the 30. That is.
They are currently. Okay, interesting.
Yep.
So so in theory, we could out the gate, charge exactly what what the they're being charged now.
Yes, but it will. Oh, that's what we're proposing.
All the funds are coming into us.
But then what? Yeah, we could actually jump to
Charge the full 40.
Charge if that's what if that's what we felt was necessary. And again, again, this is a this is a long-range plan. Nothing binds you to this fee schedule. It's but it but again, it's we're trying to be proactive in our planning for it and you'll deal with the fee schedule on an annual budget basis.
And I think logic there. Oh, sorry. Some of the logic there is I don't think that the APA necessarily dies forever if it goes away this round. So I would see the county in an out year coming back to each entity saying, hey, we need to re-implement this. We're not doing the testing. We're not that the program needs to live on. And so I could see that in out years potentially coming back.
Mark, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Proton. I was just going to ask Kyle maybe to reconfirm the fact that the reason that you've held off to 2026 is to make sure that in the aggregate, a rate payer is not paying the full rate plus the APA for two years and then the APA drops off and it goes down to what it was all along. If you could reiterate that.
That was the thought behind holding off with the tenant until we know for sure that the APA is not going to be renewed.
Well, I I can only speak for myself, but I I really like scenario three just because, one, it's predictable. Everybody knows that it's going to be $5, you know, a $5 increase each and every year. You know, it's not going to be $8 one year and two the next or nothing one year and eight or 10 or whatever the next. And I I think it just puts us in a better position financially because we don't drop below that $100,000 mark in 2026, which is good. And then by the time we hit 2030, if and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, but it looks like of all these scenarios, it leaves us the most the most, for lack of a better term, robust in 2030 with the amount that we'd have.
Yes, and those and that beginning 2030 balance is assuming that all of those operation costs are expended every single year. So we could really be in a position to be a lot stronger than what that even shows.
If there's any other thoughts in the council.
So I'd like to leave you with a question. And my question is, are you comfortable with us submitting the report as is to ecology for their review?
Best answer, yes, Lisa, as long as you think the technical merit of the report is complete. Great.
Good with everyone? And that includes the option to do scenario one or three, is that right?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Jack to that. Right? Thanks, Lisa. All right, we are up to general business. I will make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items 10A, B, and C.
Second.
Any dis? Well, no discussion, actually. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, now we are on to general business item 11B. Mission Avenue overlay revised local agreement and prospectus. Does any we need Mark or Lisa to walk us through this guy?
So because we are a small city, we we have to go through Wash Dot to administer our Mission Avenue overlay grant. So they so we provided them with a whole bunch of information to to move forward with obligating funds. One of the last pieces of that was that they provided us with a local area agreement and we had filled out the prospectus, but the in terms of they had, we needed the signatures for both of those. As we submitted the final packet for obligation, they said, oops, oops, we we can't give you the the PE, which is the engineering for construction with this first phase. This is just design engineering. So so we needed to revise the local agreement. All we're obligating right now is just the engineer, the design engineering piece. And so they have, we have a revised one and because again, for for transparency purposes, because you had authorized the other one and authorized the mayor to execute it. We wanted to bring back the revised for your approval. So we will get that the remaining part of the engineering funds for construction when we obligate the construction dollars. But we can't do that until the the design is approved.
Any questions for Lisa on that? All right, I'll make a motion to approve general business can, general business action item 11B.
Second.
Second by council member Dunn. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, any opposed? Looks like it was unanimous. Thank you all. Thank you, Lisa. All right, now we're up to council comments, item 12. Any council comments? Yes, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I had a citizen that I ran into at a local event and then he ended up following up with an email regarding waste management. And his hope is based on the conversation he had with Mark as well regarding the recycling. If the if the market has kind of fallen out, his hope would be that as part of the renegotiation of the the contract that we we give citizens the option to opt out of recycling. So I told him I would pass that along.
All right. Any other council comments? All right, we are up to public hearings and appeals. Item 13A, public hearing on the 2025 to 2030 transportation improvement plan.
I will also try and be relatively quick on this one. Next slide, please. So this is a public hearing and I just for the for the sake of the public. Every year we do a six-year transportation improvement plan. It's a requirement of the RCWs. Projects have to be in the city's tip to be eligible for state or federal and federal funding. The SEPA review was completed for this tip on June 11th. We and there were no appeals, no comments, in fact. Following the public hearing, this public hearing, we will be asking you to adopt this tip by resolution. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oh, wait. Yeah, next slide, please. So we had a few adjustments to this year's tip. It was for the most part based on the 2024 through 2029 adopted capital facilities plan. We did have a couple instances where costs were updated to reflect engineers' estimates as we have moved along in the design process. It's a normal process for us to be, as we get closer to and have more detail, we have a better understanding of what the costs are. And of course, timing for Tiff and Lift eligible items were adjusted based upon input by the sponsor. Also, some costs were adjusted. Next slide, please. So specifically okay, never mind. Keep going, please. This is what happens when you're doing 14 presentations. So this is, these are the roadway projects that are in the tip. Next slide, please. And also includes pedestrian projects, projects by others. I do have one footnote for one project that I would like to let you know, and that is the Sprague Avenue project. So our new city engineer, Luke Michaels, had a chance to review the Geotech report that had been reviewed by our Ryer engineer and what had some major concerns. There are some areas in the roadway where there's less than an inch of pavement. And so the grind and overlay does, and it's it's very sporadic. So it does not appear that the grind and overlay will work. However, he's working with the Geotech Budinger to look at what kind of a design detail we can come up with to address this based upon the low volume of traffic and based upon the actually the 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 Geotech base of the road. So I wanted to just be we don't have enough information to change it in the tip at this point. We will have that information by the time we're going through the capital facilities plan. So we will have an update for you on this project and the capital facilities plan. What it means, though, is that for the most part that we're going to have to do at least a partial rebuild. And pretty much, and it's and likely it's a full roadway rebuild, but we may be able to do it to a lesser section based upon a more detailed design process. That means we may not be in as quite a much of a rush to redo the road. The whole point in pushing this was to preserve the roadway. If the roadway can't be preserved, we may be looking at possibly changing the timing. It will be more money and we'll probably change the timing on it. We we will likely still look at the question of the stormwater, though, trying to address the most significant stormwater issues out there, which will to some degree extend the the life of that pavement, hopefully. But more importantly, it's also going to reduce impact to to the surrounding residents and whatnot. So so we do still, we will still be looking at that potentially. But again, we'll have an update for you in the capital facilities plan. I just don't have enough information to update it any other way. So that's that's my big, that's my big point.
So to paraphrase Lisa, a best-case scenario in grind and overlay is there is sufficient payment that we can actually just remove a portion and relay then a portion. Best case.
Right, that's the best case.
Worst-case scenario is rebuild. And to refer to that, that's a complete removal of the pavement and further, how many inches of what may lie under it?
Also, so so again, we have to take, that's what we have to look at. That's the investigate, the more detailed investigation that we have to do. There may be the ability to to do, take some different approaches so that we don't have to, so that we are not significantly building up the roadway. But but will, whether we're excavating or we're using a different base material or we are grinding and compacting in place or whatever, there are some different techniques. You can ask Luke next time you talk to him. This is his area of expertise. And so so he's running with it.
About when do you think Geotech will have an answer on that?
So this is, this is something where we will be working on for trying to get it, bringing it forward to our capital facilities plan. You know, we start we start workshopping those in September. So it's something that we're, he's right now scheduling a meeting with with it's Budinger that did the Geotech report, parametrics and himself to kind of kind of work through that process. So more to come. This is covered by the design contract that we already have in place, but more information to come.
Thanks.
Councilmembers Kurtson Kennedy, I can't see you. So if you have a thought or a question, chime in.
Nope.
Okay.
All right, so next slide, please. This is a public hearing. So if there are no council questions, it's appropriate to open it up for public testimony.
All right, we will open it up for public testimony at 9:25 and take any public comment. Please, one at a time. Anybody online as well?
No.
We need to wait a full minute. Okay. All right, the clock has moved to 9:26. So we will close the public hearing on the transportation improvement plan. And we will move on to public hearings and appeals. Item 13B, the public hearing on ordinance 303, suspending the acceptance of annual applications for amendments to the city's comprehensive plan and development code until the completion of the 2026 periodic comprehensive plan update.
And Kyle's going to bring up a presentation for me real quickly and it's quick again, but I just want to give you the context. I should have just stayed standing, shouldn't I? So we are, we we have before you an emergency ordinance to suspend the comprehensive plan and development code amendments for a time specific for 2025 and 2026. Let me just kind of explain the context to you. Next slide, please. So our city development code provides for amendments to comprehensive plan and development code texts with privately initiated amendments processed annually. Applications are received by April 1st and they have to be processed in the same calendar year. It typically involves a significant staff resources and dominates the planning commission schedule in any given year. Some are worse than others. And last year was a really brutal year. Next slide, please. So we're, as you heard from Joe Mann, we are obviously in the midst of the comp plan periodic update. I've been before you once or twice whining about just the the volume of work that it's going to take to get this across the finish line. It is due June 30th of 2026. And it, the planning period officially kicks off July 1st. It will require significant dedication of staff resources and demand robust planning commission participation through the adoption. They've already committed to doubling up on their meetings as we start really getting into the meat of this because there's no way. There's so much to cover. Development codes will be required in the six months or will be required in the six months following the development, the comp plan adoption. So we've got some significant code overhauls that are tied to all of the changes to the Growth Management Act also that are going to be in the last half of 2026. If we're successful in getting the legislature to give us a some breathing room. Next slide, please. So staff has recommended the suspension of the annual comp plan and development code amendment cycles for just 2025 and 2026 while we're in the heat of this amendment process. It allows staff, the planning commission, to focus our efforts on the comp plan and it will require an ordinance by city council to suspend the annual cycle. The planning commission did recommend this at their May 8th meeting. Next slide, please. And I want to pause for a second and explain why this is an emergency ordinance. This is a temporary suspension of something that is in our development code. It is, and it is temporal. It is for a specific period of time. It's based on emergent circumstances, i.e. the significant resource demands associated with this particular comp plan update. It's very similar to the type of emergency ordinance you would pass for a moratorium. But it's way less inflammatory because it's for a specific period of time and we're not trying to change the code permanently. We're just trying to to give ourselves a bye for a very specific period of time. And by doing it as an emergency ordinance with a time specific, it does not result in the need to adopt a second ordinance to reinstate the annual cycle of comp plan and code amendments at the end of the process. And just so you know, a true code, a true code amendment is a very time-consuming process in and of itself. We have to workshop it with the planning commission. We have public hearings. We have to send it to Commerce for a 60-day comment period. We workshop it with you. We have a hearing with you. You go through the adoption of the ordinance, the first read, second read. And we would, we would rinse and repeat at the end of the comp plan cycle. So we'd be doing that all over again. The emergency ordinance, this is, this emergency ordinance is the approach that has been used in City of Spokane, City of Kelso, and some of the other cities within within the state that I know of that have done this during prior comp plan cycles. Next slide, please. And so with that, I just, I, I just want to assure you that we, there, it's, we haven't completely eliminated the ability, ability to bring a development code forward. It's probably not even realistic or timely to consider a comp plan amendment in this process, in this time period, but a development code amendment could be brought forward at the behest of city staff, city counselor, the, the city administrator. So it's not like if, if something came up that really needed to be addressed in code, we would have the ability to do it. So with that, it is a public hearing. I'd like to answer any questions you have first, though.
Any questions, Councilmember? Kennedy, it sounds like.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, one question, Lisa, on the temporary, uh, do you know a timeframe that you would anticipate putting on the temporary?
Yes, so it would only be for the annual cycle in 2025, again, which is the applications would do April 1st and in 2026 again, and, and so 2025, 2026, 2027. Wide open again.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Spencer?
So 2027, you, you could potentially run into the same issue. Is that what you're saying? Like you just don't know right now what, what that's going to look like?
No, 2027, we would be open for business again. So anybody could, anyone could privately initiate. We always can do city initiated anytime. Comp plan amendments can only be done once a year because that's the state code around the growth management act. But development code, we can do anytime and you've seen us do many ordinance changes outside of our annual cycle. So that's not, that's not a big deal. But 2027, if somebody wants to, uh, propose an amendment to our newly adopted comp plan, they're there.
So from a, from a resources standpoint, in order to keep things the way they are, what, what additional resources would you need in order to not pass this emergency ordinance?
So I don't know because I don't know what would be coming through our door, but we've had, we've had a couple of really heavy years. And you never know how controversial or not controversial something's going to be. You know, we are, we will be working on our sign, sign code. And so, so that is something that's also a heavy lift and we're doing that in parallel with the comp plan and that's, that's, it's going to take a lot. We will be bringing forward to you some contracts related to parts and pieces of the comp plan for some, some real technical expertise in specialized areas of that. The more we have going on with processing of these types of applications, the more we're going to have to lean on consultants to help us with the comp plan. And I think that, I, I think that it's important that staff who really knows and understands the city is much more involved than having somebody who is, having a consultant who's going to have to come in and pick our brains to tell us what we.
Already know, right?
Yeah. Exactly.
Well, and it sounds like the bottleneck really is going to be with the planning commission because they're already going to be doubling up their, their meetings and everything. So, so even if you had more staff to, to work with that, the planning commission already is going to have a pretty full plate.
Right. We, we pretty much fast tracked the two ordinances that Joe talked about. We have public hearings next month. We'll be bringing it to workshop in August with hopefully a hearing at the, at the last meeting in August and you'll be adopting them in September. It's a pretty fast track for our, for our annual cycles. Typically it takes longer than that and we've been working on these. One of them, we started in January. And the other one, we started, I think in like right in April, but even still it does take a lot of time and we, it has completely occupied our planning commission meetings for the last number of months.
Well, I guess that was going to be my question, Lisa, is that, is this going to impact those particular issues at all?
No, no, those, what we have in process is, is going to move forward. It's just the 2025 cycle, which again, the deadline's in April. We, and in fact, one of the code amendments that came forward in this cycle, we had for, we were forewarning people that we were going to be asking for this. So that, and so they've got it in very quickly in the 11th hour.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. Lisa, you might have sort of answered this when Councilmember Spencer was just talking, but one of the questions that I had for you is you talked a little bit about consultants versus the experienced staff and I just wondered if, but I think you answered this. If planning ahead for in the next budget cycle so that you guys are prepared for, and have the adequate staff, but I think you also just said that the planning commission is doing a lot of work too. Is there anything different that we could be doing from that perspective?
So, so they, the, the planning commission is charged with reviewing all of this. Staff or consultants have to do the foundational work. Planning commission reviews it and provides recommendations and kind of shapes it, moves it along. But the reality is that we will be asking for some consultants. We talked about it last year. We have parts and pieces, the parks plan as an example. We are going to be proposing a budget to have a consultant come in to do that piece. It's got to be done next year to be part of our comp plan. And, and that's going to be a heavy lift for staff. And it is an important piece. It's an important piece for our community. I think that there are other parts and pieces. We have been looking at trying to do an on-call planning contract, much like we have with the engineer, where we could peel off parts and pieces so that, so some of the more technical things. I need to do a critical area ordinance checklist. There's people that that's all they do that we could, you know, or we really have a good handle on the housing piece of it. It's, it's a heavy lift, but we think we can do, do the land cap, or the land capacity analysis and the needs assessment. But I'd like to get somebody who is way more knowledgeable than we are on the housing policy analysis piece. And it's, I haven't done housing policy in 30 years. So a little bit has changed since then.
Just a little.
Just a little.
Lisa, can I ask you one more question?
Sure.
Are there any, is there any downside to doing this? Any consequence, any unintended consequence to going forward tonight?
I, I don't think so. And I think that if something, like I said, there is a relief valve because if somebody had a development code thing that had to be done, we could bring it forward as a city initiated and that could be, it could be council, it could be mayor, it could be our staff saying, oh, you know what? We really need to do this and we can bring it forward. So it just, it gives us a little bit more control over the outer left field amendments that we've had a few of in the recent years.
Any other questions? All right, we will open the public hearing at nine 39 and accept any testimony on ordinance 303, suspending the acceptance of the annual applications for the amendments to the city's comprehensive plan. Going once, anybody online wishes to testify? All right, we will close it at nine 40. Thank you all very much. All right, we are up to resolutions, resolution number 24 dash 262.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, council before us tonight, we have resolution number 240, 24 dash 262, a resolution of the city of Liberty Lake updating the six-year transportation improvement program for 2025 through 2030.
Mayor Protem, I move resolution 24262.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in, oh, oh, there's public comment on this one too. Okay. Public comment on resolution number 24 dash 262. Anybody online?
Nope.
All right. We will move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. No ordinances, emergency ordinance, 16A, ordinance number 303.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Council before us tonight, ordinance number 303, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, suspending the acceptance of annual applications for amendments to the city's comprehensive plan and development code until the completion of the city's 2026 periodic comprehensive plan update and deferring and suspending the processing of applications which cannot be completed before December 31st, 2024 and declaring an emergency.
Move ordinance number 303.
Uh, I'll second it. So we have a motion to, uh, move ordinance number 303, an ordinance suspending the acceptance of the annual applications for amendments to the city's comprehensive plan and development code. Any discussion? All those in favor, please. Oh, we have to take testimony again. Okay. All right, we will open it up again to take public testimony. But we don't need to do it in official time, right? All right. Any testimony on ordinance number 303? Anybody online? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Anything on here that anyone wants to see removed or added or discuss more?
Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I was attending our annual HOA meeting and a gentleman spoke and it sounds like there were quite a few in this particular neighborhood who have a, have some concerns about somebody smoking marijuana in their backyard and not being able to enjoy their own property. And so in, in, in chatting with him further, it's, it's surprising to me that there isn't something already in place that, that perhaps because we already have in RCW 7160 030, talking about smoking being prohibited in public places or places of employment and the distance that you have to be from those, from those premises. So I, I think it might be appropriate to perhaps take a look at a, a local ordinance that at least to explore what, what that might look like. Because you know, I can, I can, I can appreciate the idea of not being able to, you know, enjoy your own property because of something somebody's doing. And, and this particular gentleman has specific health issues that, that he, that causes migraines and things like that. It just, just with the smell, so.
Okay. Can add that on there as a Councilmember Spencer. Anything else anyone would like to add?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to see on, uh, July 2nd, the library design and construction project management services agreement.
Okay. I assume that the plan was to bring that back at that time, Mark, on July 2nd?
Is, are, are we talking about as a workshop item?
The action for consideration of a vote, general business.
So on, on the agenda, yes, but we can bring it back on July 2nd, if that's the desire of council.
Anything else?
Yeah, Mayor Protem. Just real quick, with regards to Councilmember Spencer's request, we'll, let's leave it on there, but we'll have Sean and the, and the chief take a look and see if there's anything we can do. I don't know if there's anything we can do, like you said, because there's the RCW, but we can certainly look into it.
Anything else anyone wants to add on to the upcoming agenda items? All right, we are up to our final citizen comments, period. Anyone who wishes to comment, you'll have three minutes. Anyone? Anyone online?
Nope.
All right. All right, we have no executive sessions. So if there's no objection, we will adjourn at nine 45. Thank you all.